Good morning.
Good morning.
And saying good morning to all those in attendance in person, as well as to all of those attending our meeting virtually. The 350th Meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. During this meeting, the Board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the Board of Trustees present for this meeting include myself, Eric Nichols, Vice Chair Faith Johnson, Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Seashawn Siv, Pastor Nate Sprinkle, General Bill Welch, Sidney Zeiger, and Tom Fordice. A quorum is present, and the meeting of the Board is declared open. This meeting is being conducted in person here at the Cambria Hotel on the north side of Austin, and is also being broadcast on the Texas Department of Criminal Justice YouTube channel. It is 8:04 a.m. Before we get started, I would like to invite everyone present to stand as you are able and join us as a Board in pledges of allegiance. Texas Department of Criminal Justice Chief Programs Officer Jason Clark will lead us in the pledges. Mr. Clark, I see you're at the podium, so when you are ready, please begin.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I now ask Wyndham School District Trustee Pastor Nate Sprinkle to offer a word of prayer as we start our meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. Would y'all pray with me this morning? Gracious Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning in the name of Jesus, and we are grateful again for another day. We're grateful for life, for breath, for the privilege of work and fulfillment, and hope, and joy, and responsibility that you've given us. One of the joys and responsibilities that you offer us, those of us in this room and many beyond, is to participate and to contribute to the education and rehabilitation of the precious lives in incarceration across our state. Father, we are grateful for the privilege of doing so through Wyndham School District. We are grateful for the hundreds of administrators, teachers, staff that so diligently serve and do their jobs so well. We're thankful for all that you're doing in helping educate and rehabilitate lives, again, across our state through their diligent work. So we are comforted to know that you offer us the opportunity to do good works that you prepared beforehand, and that we would walk in them. So, Father, this morning, as we gather as the Wyndham School Board, District School Board, we just pray that you'll give us wisdom for any matters needed to be decided before us, and, Lord, that you'll just encourage our hearts and encourage the staff all across this state about what they're doing and the significance of this work. We thank you for it. We thank you again. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Sprinkle. As a courtesy to speakers and guests in the meeting, we ask that you please set your electronic devices to the silent or vibrate mode. As always, we recognize the public officials and staff representatives with us in person and also online. In particular, today in person, we are gratified to have Reagan Stewart of the LBB with us here today, and also Mr. Mike Ward from the Texas Senate, and we appreciate all those other representatives of public officials that are with us online today. The Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics, as well as public comments on issues within its jurisdiction, as provided in Board Rule 300.1. Persons interested in speaking at today's meeting were required to complete and submit a registration card at least 10 minutes prior to the meeting's posted start time. As no cards were received prior to the required deadline, the Board will not hear public presentations on posted agenda topics today, or public comments on issues within the Board's jurisdiction. So let's begin with our agenda. The first agenda topic covers consent items. Are there any amendments, objections, or abstentions to the proposed consent items? Hearing none, the consent items posted for this meeting's agenda will stand approved. The next item on our agenda is a report from Superintendent Ms. Christina Hartman regarding Texas contributions to education in corrections. If you're ready, Ms. Hartman, you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Nichols, Vice Chair Johnson, and members. Today, I'll be sharing information about Texas's role in national and international collaboration as it relates to education and corrections. Wyndham School District and the Texas Department of Criminal Justice work closely with our counterparts in other states through a variety of associations, networking opportunities, and shared learning experiences. And what initially prompted this report is I was visiting a classroom about a month ago, and the students were on a chapter related to entrepreneurship, associations, and memberships. So I had the opportunity to speak with them for a few minutes about the value of networking and learning from other partners, and thought we would share some of that information with you all today. So most recently, Texas was represented at the American Correctional Association, the ACA Conference in Denver, Colorado. Our team presented a session titled "Engaging Interagency and Non-Governmental Organizations for High-Impact Advisory Recommendations in the Corrections Setting." The panel included TDCJ Executive Director Mr. Bobby Lumpkin, Dr. Chyna Jackson, Assistant Commissioner for Workforce Education at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and Cole Meyer, and a policy analyst at Texas Appleseed along with myself. And you all may remember meeting Dr. Jackson and Cole at a prior meeting when we recognized the Post-Secondary Education Advisory Committee members. So during the presentation, we highlighted examples from Texas's efforts to gather meaningful feedback from stakeholders and resulting legislative outcomes. A couple of things that the audience members seemed to find particularly interesting was Texas's willingness to invite outside advocacy groups and partners into collaboration with us. We feel that receiving feedback from external partners makes us better. Certainly, if you bounce back to my 20 years that I've had in education and corrections, and so it hasn't always been like that. You know, at some points, we've been really indicated that we've got control of everything here, we know what's going on, and I'm really pleased that in collaboration with Mr. Lumpkin, TDCJ and Wyndham have really opened the doors for communication and collaboration with those external parties. And it was interesting to see the reaction of the other states as we indicated to them how some of this information was useful during the legislative session, and how folks that, you know, maybe previously were a little concerned about how things were operating, were then testifying in support of the things happening within TDCJ and Wyndham, particularly as it relates to education and corrections. So that seemed to be particularly useful to the audience members. We also attended other sessions and learned from other states. So we attended some sessions focused on adult corrections, housing and engagement strategies for youthful learners, artificial intelligence, and leadership development. So really pleased to have the opportunity to represent Texas along with my TDCJ colleagues on the ACA Board of Governors. I'm also representing on the Awards Committee, International Committee, Probation and Parole Committee, and as the Chair of the Education and Directors in Corrections Council, which is a newly formed council within the ACA. The Education Directors in Corrections Council was established within the last year and created to offer informed recommendations to the organization from educators. Certainly very impressed with the leadership there. The Executive Director, Rob Green, at one point approached me and said, and this is coming from someone that has a lot of experience on the custody side, "You know, I hear you all saying correctional education, but isn't it education in corrections? Because we're talking about the setting, not the type of education that you offer." And that really stemmed national conversation among myself and my colleagues that represent education and corrections in other states. And we've really changed the way that our terminology is reflective so that our community partners understand that the students in the correction setting aren't getting a different kind of education. It is substantially similar to the community resources that are necessary for someone to be successful as they reenter. So during the first meeting of that council, we met with representatives from Delaware, Florida, Maine, Ohio, Virginia, and Washington State. We established priorities, reviewed recent legislation, and discussed ways to keep correction stakeholders informed, such as the possible development of newsletter articles and a symposium focused on technology which will occur at the ACA Conference in Long Beach. And that is specific to the education and corrections environment, how technology can be used for professional development for staff, and how it may be used in other betterment and treatment programs. So during the council, the members emphasized the value in developing fact sheets that support their work, and selected committee leads in key areas, including career and technical education, evidence-based practices, technology, professional educators, interdisciplinary collaboration, and strategic planning. The meeting was both productive and encouraging, with members actively sharing ideas and initiatives. Texas also highlighted recent legislation related to occupational licensing, removal of barriers, and the strong support that we get from our state legislators. We have a virtual meeting scheduled to follow up at the end of this month on these high-interest topic areas. We also actively engage in the Correctional Education Association. You all have been briefed in the past on our audits through the Correctional Education Association, which are valuable because people that have expertise in education and corrections are coming in and telling us what we're doing well in Texas, and providing recommendation on areas where we can improve. During our most recent summer meeting, directors received important updates from the U.S. Department of Education regarding Pell Grants for post-secondary education in the correction setting, and key-focused discussion on the upcoming rulemaking process for workforce short-term Pell Initiative, which aims to expand access to short-term, career-focused training programs that can lead to meaningful employment for people that are coming out of our setting. CA continues to serve as a valuable platform for collaboration, hosting monthly virtual meetings that address high-interest topics within education and corrections. These sessions provide directors with opportunities to share challenges, offer solutions, and exchange ideas with colleagues from across the country. Within the past year, and I will thank my TDCJ colleagues for bringing us into the fold, Wyndham has began its engagement with the Texas Corrections Association. And now I'm serving on the Board alongside with several of the colleagues that are in the audience today. As a member of the Conference Planning Committee, we've had the opportunity to help shape the agenda for the upcoming San Antonio Conference. The conference will feature a diverse range of presenters covering topics such as leadership development, artificial intelligence, substance use awareness, and intervention strategies, and approaches for working with special populations. We're particularly excited that Ms. Sidney Zeiger, one of our Board members, will be presenting at the Conference on Mental Health Resources. The opening keynote speaker is Kristy Krings from Rachel's Challenge, which was also a referral from our Board, and the closing speaker is Matt Tenney, who is a well-known leadership speaker. Finally, we were recently notified that the Joint Culinary Arts Experience held on October 12, 2023 at the Travis Campus, an international collaboration held between the Czech Republic, TDCJ, Wyndham, and Sam Houston State University, was a finalist for the 2025 Prison Achievement Award presented by the European Organization of Prison and Correctional Services, known as Europas. So that's a network of national prison agencies across Europe that recognize innovative and impactful practices in corrections. So this unique event unique event showcased the power of cross-cultural engagement and rehabilitation efforts through career and technical education. Participants from both countries worked side by side in a culinary experience that emphasized skill-building, teamwork, and mutual respect. The collaboration highlighted how hands-on learning and international partnerships can support personal growth, professional development, and community reentry. I'd like to show a brief updated video that captures the impact of this experience firsthand that was submitted to Euopras for consideration.
Welcome to Texas virtually, Chief Half of Texas Department of Criminal Justice in Wyndham School District.
We're here in culinary arts here at Travis County Campus, and we have some visitors from the Czech Republic that we're excited to host. And we're going to be cooking some Texas red chili. It's really cool that we have people that are coming here to visit us and see how we do things here at Travis County. And we're getting an opportunity to see how they are doing things in the Czech Republic. And hopefully, in this process, we can learn some things, how they're doing things, and maybe take some of that and apply it to how we're doing things here and vice versa. You know, here in Texas, we like things spicy. We like beef. And I think Texas red chili just says it all. It's got flavor. And so it just really represents what we stand for here in Texas.
It's exciting. Good food and getting to show our skills off to people here as well as another country. It's pretty cool getting to see some of their food and how their program's running.
Here at Travis County Culinary, we've learned all types of cooking techniques and kitchen management skills.
It's a little out of my element, but I'm really happy that I did it. I mean, I think that coming to a facility like this and having an opportunity to step outside myself and try something new, and doing it okay, really gives me some confidence going forward.
So that particular event also has stemmed some recent conversation. April Zamora and myself were happy to host the Florida Department of Corrections on a recent tour here. And they shared some information on competitions where they bring students in the state together. So think masonry competitions, culinary competitions, things of that nature. So our wheels are definitely turning in terms of what we can do in-state and also collaboration with other states and other countries to continue these practices. Being named as a finalist for the award reflects the growing recognition of Texas's commitment to innovative practices within the corrections environment. It also aligns with broader efforts such as expansion of Pell Grant access and the upcoming workforce short-term Pell Initiative to confirm that individuals within incarceration have meaningful opportunities to pursue their educational and workforce training goals. This recognition is not only an honor but a reminder of the importance of continued collaboration within education and corrections. And although we did not win, I will say that the individual from the Czech Republic, when asked about winning, and they said, "Who won?" He said, "Everyone." There were four other programs that were highlighted and had the opportunity to go and watch their videos and actually pick up some great ideas from what they're doing as well. But I mean, it was a very proud moment for all of us to even have the opportunity to be named as a finalist with Euopras. So a couple other things. You know, I mentioned the education in corrections technology, and you all are aware that the Texas Legislature has supported connectivity and bandwidth for us. We've recently, yesterday, actually had a call with Sam Houston State University, and we talked about the possibility of a research implementation study to get information on perceptions from staff. What are their expectations for technology? How do they think it's going to improve how they work? And to get the same information from the students to help us meaningfully prepare for what's coming. You know, some of the things that we anticipate are people are going to be very excited to have those resources in their classroom, but they're also going to have concerns about training and making sure that they have the tools in their hands to be successful with the students. So Sam Houston State University connected with us in terms of potential research at one of the conferences that I've described here. So that's just another way that we're engaged in networking and connecting with people. So by working across agencies and even international borders, we not only enhance outcomes for individuals we serve, but we also create opportunities for professional growth and shared learning. The district looks forward to continuing this work and collaboration to expand opportunities that center the voices, talents, and potential of the individuals we serve. And in conclusion, I just do want to do one quick thank you and call out to my colleagues in TDCJ and to several of the legislative offices, one that's represented here today, for helping us over the last couple of weeks, secure letters of support. And thank you to the board as well. We are potentially, well, we have submitted for a grant opportunity that relates to data analysis across agencies, collaboration, and bettering pathways for people from training to reentry that really measures the wage-earning outcomes. And what we've done in the past is we're measuring students who participated in Wyndham programs versus people coming out of corrections that didn't participate in Wyndham programs. This would give us the opportunity to measure people that have participated in programs and their wage earnings with people in the community that have the same level of training. So we can see if we're on a pretty even playing field, or if there are additional supports necessary for our student population to be successful. So that's just a big thank you to you all in a really, I think, demonstration of how collaboration moves us forward. And it was actually fun. Writing a grant usually is not fun, but I will tell you that this time, it was actually really fun because I was able to pull pieces of evidence from different MOUs over the past five years, different meeting agendas, and seeing the number of people around the table from the various agencies was really encouraging. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that great report. A lot of stuff packed in there. And so I've got a couple of comments and questions, and I imagine that other board members do as well. So first of all, I really appreciate your, I know I speak on behalf of the entire board, really appreciate your highlighting opportunities for engaging with interested public policy stakeholders around the state. I just think that, as you said, that has paid dividends in terms of amplifying, hopefully, what we do at these board meetings, which is to make sure that everyone understands that the board's orientation is that no one has a monopoly on good ideas, and that people who have good thoughts and ideas can come forward and express them in a constructive way. And so very much appreciate that. The second one, on a little lighter note, I hope you can express to our culinary arts instructors and even our students that at least one member of the board, and I'm sure others do as well, appreciate the fact that they are making Texas chili the right way, that they are using stew meat, and that I didn't see any beans in there either. So please, please pass along that. And then, and then one question, which is on these Pell Grants that you mentioned. Sometimes I think about Pell Grants as being to support purely academic programs, but it sounds to me like what you're saying is that Pell Grants also help to support education and training in specific trades or areas of work that are achievable and that are that have capacity in our communities and that actually provide a platform for having someone who's making reentry have a sustainable future. So if you could just add a few more words on that.
Sure, correct. So in my report, I also, I described two types of Pell. So there are Pell Grants that are currently authorized for use, of course, in the public and as of 2023 in the corrections environment. And that does include career and technical education training programs that are of a certain length. So, you know, historically, if you were to walk into a classroom of a Lee College, or Alvin College, or Trinity Valley Community College, many of those students in the technical trades are utilizing Pell Grants to fund their education that they're receiving. So the new workforce Pell legislation that's fairly recent at the federal level, which will be undergoing the rulemaking process, will extend that opportunity to shorter-term programs. So when we have people that are at locations that historically the students are coming in, and maybe they're only there for six months with us before they're back into their communities, that will make these programs accessible to them as well. And it will be an entry-level credential of value, industry-based certification, but it will get your foot in the door with the high-demand employers. And then the students will continue their training with the employer and may continue on post-secondary in the community as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions or comments? I see Ambassador Siv.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on your leadership on culinary activities. And I want to assure Superintendent Hartman that I am in line to get my hands dirty in the culinary program. I have yet to get really my hands dirty. So it's on my list. The second thing I want to ask you is about the European Organization of Prisons. What is, how are they structured, and what is our interaction with them?
Yes, honestly, so our first interaction with them was the notification that we were a finalist for this award. It was submitted by our colleagues in the Czech Republic. They reached out to us and asked for some information and a video clip, a recent video clip from us. So my understanding is that it's similar to the Leadership Association here, where the agency head in Europe of the prison system is a membership there, and then some of their colleagues in the prison system. So probably quite similar to some of the things that Mr. Lumpkin participates in with the Correctional Leadership Association. I'm looking at him to make sure I'm saying this correctly. And then embedded in conferences. So, but there were, you know, the countries that I saw there that were finalists, I remember seeing Turkey. I remember seeing Ireland, England. So, you know, it seems like it's, they're highly participatory in it. But to answer your question, the first I'd heard of it was, "Guess what? We're a finalist for this award," which was very exciting news. And we look forward to hosting you in our culinary classes.
Thank you, Ambassador Siv. And please, as I saw from the video, do not hold back on the garlic or onion when you're making that chili. Other questions or comments from the board? General? There we go. I just want to say that the enthusiasm with which you present is evident throughout your entire organization. It's amazing and greatly appreciate the effort that you all put forward, you from the top and all those that are under you. Just amazing. I would also like to point out that I personally like have beans in my chili. So I'm sorry. I mean, but there are two ways to make it here in Texas. Not all board matters are unanimous, is what you're saying.
So I smell a cook-off. And then also, thank you for recognizing our team. We have a fantastic team of staff and educators. They are the team that motivates me. It is a wonderful, wonderful organization to work with, and thank you for recognizing their efforts.
General Welch's comment reminded me that I have had several legislators in the past couple of months talk about Wyndham and say that, you know, this session in particular, they really learned a lot about Wyndham. And so I'm really grateful for all those conversations. I know you spend a lot of time having conversations, and so I think it's paying off because I'm hearing it just out in public. So, great job.
Thank you. I will say that we, when I described the grant, we received letter of commitments from several offices. And you never know when you call, you know, will we get this and will not. And the way that they turned these things around, that they read the application, that they had such intelligent and thoughtful questions, it was really encouraging. And we feel the support and we appreciate it.
Thank you, board members, for your good comments. It is now time for the chairman's report. And in my presentation today and in future presentations, I will try to do our part in spotlighting the many ways in which the Wyndham School District is attempting to innovate, not just attempting, but actually is innovating and modernizing its operations and programming. So for today's meeting, I would like to focus on the manner in which Wyndham is expanding the use of peer resources, that is, student-to-student peer resources to amplify its programming. This amplification is through primarily Wyndham School District's peer tutor training program. It is well-established through research that adult learners who participate in peer tutoring programs experience academic improvement, and not just any academic improvement, academic improvement that you can measure in a range of 15% to 20%. Wyndham's peer tutor training program is designed to train members of our incarcerated populations to provide peer support to fellow students working towards their high school equivalency, high school diploma, or, as we just talked about, their career and technical education goals. Beyond academics, the training program encourages the development of communication, leadership, and personal growth. In other words, there is no doubt that peer support programs provide benefits both to the student receiving the peer support and the student providing the peer support. Peer tutors are expected to lead by example, creating a culture of shared success, mentorship, and mutual encouragement. And as I have said many times to men and women in TDCJ custody, positive peer leadership, the leadership of incarcerated individuals among their incarcerated communities is essential to building the type of healthy, rehabilitative culture within our TDCJ facilities that we as a board want for Wyndham and TDCJ staff and the incarcerated population. So let's hear more today about this peer support program. Joining us for the report today and at the podium is someone who is very familiar to the board, Ms. Luann Pickett, Department Director of Instruction for Wyndham. Ms. Pickett, as always, we appreciate your work and your efforts to keep us up to date on developments in instruction at Wyndham. When you're ready, take it away.
Well, good morning, Chairman, and thank you. And good morning, board members and Superintendent Hartman. It's my pleasure to tell you about this program today. Wyndham's peer tutor program, training program supports tutors in gaining leadership, communication, and interpersonal skills while strengthening their own academic foundation. They also develop a deeper sense of responsibility and community. Students receiving tutoring benefit from individual attention and clarification of concepts that is presented by their Wyndham teachers. This structure builds confidence, increases motivation, and encourages a deeper engagement with learning. Wyndham's peer tutor training program is currently based at the Bartlett Campus and operates on a 12-week cycle covering eight modules. Candidates for the program are drawn from the district's pool of current or prospective peer tutors, and they return to their campus of assignment to continue providing support following their training. Minimum requirements for participation include a high school diploma or equivalency certificate, qualifying assessment scores, and a completion of a peer tutor training agreement that outlines expectations, confidentiality, and the program rules. And we do a very strong, good, thorough training on confidentiality. The peer tutor training program provides a comprehensive curriculum designed to develop both academic and instructional skills. In the first two modules, program participants receive orientation, including pretesting, confidentiality training, and course outline. They also complete professional communications training through Southwest Airlines Communication Service, customer service, and they participate in a book study. Modules three and four focus on cognitive strategies and CTE safety procedures, including the importance of personal protective equipment. Modules five and six cover instructional foundations, subject-specific strategies, and workplace readiness. These modules also highlight high-impact standards in math, as well as strengthen CTE-related math instruction. Finally, modules seven and eight emphasize instructional technology, digital resources, and individualized tutoring through a practicum that includes student data analysis. Throughout the training program, tutors have the opportunity to earn certifications that enhance both their academic and their professional skill set. The peer tutor training program integrates technology to build digital literacy, incorporating laptops, smart boards, instructional software, and online resources. This emphasis ensures tutors and students are prepared for both academic and workplace settings. Evaluation is key. It's a key part of the tutor training program. Tutors are evaluated with feedback, used to reinforce accountability, highlight achievements, and identify areas for growth. Upon program completion, peer tutors return to their assigned campuses equipped with advanced skills to provide ongoing academic support and membership. The program proudly celebrated its first cohort on August 14 with 27 tutors graduating from the program. The second cohort began on September 22 with approximately 23 tutors currently enrolled, continuing the program's momentum and establishing a steady cycle of training and tutor deployment. Currently, there are select tutors from the pre- Currently, there are select tutors from the previous cohort that will remain to assist with subsequent cohorts. Now, looking to the future, Wyndham's peer tutor training program is planning on expansion to include library clerks. The library clerks will be trained to tutor individuals who are struggling with specific subjects or who are on the waitlist to begin their educational journey. This development will broaden the program's reach, providing more men and women access to timely and effective academic support. At this time, I'd like to show a brief video that describes the peer tutor training program experience.
The best thing about the peer tutor program to me is that they actually, the whole unit basically teaches you like a person. Even though I'm still in white and I'm still incarcerated, I feel like a person to them and therefore it makes me want to actually put effort into what I'm doing.
The peer tutor program has helped me feel more equipped to better return to the classroom because they give you the tools you need to help others, as in using a calculator or certain things in Aztec or just certain, um, skills to help individuals that might need a little more help.
I learned more about meaning in this class than anything. I mean, the academic, we kind of learn how to, not how to learn the academic, how to teach the academic. Let's learn how you learn. And once you know how you learn, you can learn how to teach somebody else because you can pick up their learning style. You're not going back to school. You're just learning about you. So that way you can teach somebody. You know, once you know you, you know all your triggers, you know everything you need to do, then you can help people with theirs.
I was given a lot of resources and new ways to teach things and how to see things in a different way.
It's very comprehensive. It's very straightforward. I feel as if you come here ready to learn, you're going to get what you need out of the program.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett, for that video and also for your good presentation on this program. Just a couple of follow-up questions. So, and also would welcome the superintendent's thoughts on this. Can you describe for us how tutors, you've described how they're being, um, uh, brought into the program and how they're receiving the training they receive. So on the, on the other side, how are these tutors assigned to assist their peer, uh, students in, in, in advancing themselves?
Yes, sir. Well, we have two ways that we're getting our, um, selection. And some of them are already assigned as tutors in the school. And that's what we really want to hone in on because we want to get them better equipped. But we also put out advertisements and we wanted to get more people that wanted to try this. And so we have a little mix of both, people that are currently assigned as tutors on our campuses and those that wanted to be a tutor. I talked to one of the, um, gentlemen who graduated and he told me he saw our advertisement on the floor in the date room and he picked it up and he was in maintenance. And, uh, he decided to go to education and decide to try this. And he got to come and he really enjoyed it. So we're going to, and we said in the presentation that we're moving to our library clerks. So they're already assigned, but we want to take advantage of giving more resources to people who may not be able to come into school at that moment. But we're, we're having two different, uh, ways to get them there.
Excellent. Ms. Hartman?
Just wanted to add to that, that when she mentions people that are already assigned, so we have peer tutors that are uncertified and then we have peer tutors that become certified. So even if they're working in the education environment, once they go through this training program, they are better equipped to assist. You heard the gentleman, uh, mention how he learned about learning styles and how to, you know, how I learn and how others learn. And then, um, also, if you don't mind, I also wanted to point out, the first man that spoke there, you may have noticed how he mentioned the, the mutual respect between staff and residents. And that is a, a direct thank you to TDCJ for the culture at the Bartlett unit. So I think that he was not only recognizing the peer tutoring program, but he was recognizing the efforts of TDCJ.
And that was my other question. Obviously, there's amazing things going on at Bartlett. But is this peer, uh, tutor training program and its impact going to extend beyond Bartlett?
So we envision having various hubs. This is of course a pilot, but it would make sense to have regional hubs or something of that nature. The next hub will be for the women. So this was the, the pilot program and then it will extend to the women. And then we'll see, uh, you know, what the reach is at that point and then make a determination on additional locations.
Excellent, excellent. Questions, comments from other members of the board? I see Pastor Sprinkle.
I just wanted to say real quickly, I love the idea of this program. It's great. You, there may have been, as Superintendent suggested, may have already been informal tutors, uh, peer tutors out there. I don't know if that's already been going on, but this program thoroughly prepares them. What a wonderful concept with the, the students. Actually, these tutors can come alongside and help support the things that our teachers are trying to do and in a one-on-one setting. So a real benefit to the students. But then, um, what kind of encouragement and confidence building it's given to the tutors themselves? Um, I, I just love the concept of the program. And I did have a question about the library clerks as, as it spreads. Is the intent to have all of our library clerks ultimately trained as peer tutors?
Yeah, well, yes, sir. That would be the, the optimum goal. Uh, we do have a lot of libraries and a lot of library clerks, but, uh, that is the move we're going to go toward. We're getting this going and then the next reach out will be to have a special cohort for the library tutors. And hopefully all of them will be able to go through this.
And then as they're trained, you've got tutors right there, ready and available on every unit in every library.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Murrah?
Yes. Um, in medicine, we say see one, do one, teach one. And I'm involved a lot in academics of med students. And as the one gentleman was alluding to, him learning to teach other people, he has to know himself and how he learns first. And, you know, in, in medicine and in law and a lot, a lot of fields, you get better as you repeat. And so not only does it, I mean, help the students that are being tutored, but the teachers, we learn so much when I teach med students. And it reinforces and helps to remind us of things that we know, right? And so it, it's just a great benefit for, for all sides of this, you know? And, and just with the end goal of education and rehabilitation. And I, and I think what the pastor alluded to, I mean, it gives them a sense of pride and meaning and worth, which a lot of people don't have, you know, when, when they come into the system. And I think it's great. And, you know, actually, you don't know what future educators you may have. And people may find their true gift with this. And, and that's our goal, right?
And you always get more when you give, you know? You've received more than you gave because you feel really good inside. So I think it's positive for everyone.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Pickett, for your presentation. And, and please relay our board's thanks to all the members of the Wyndham staff who are helping to support and implement programs, peer support programs such as this. So thank you very much for your time today.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the annual review of Wyndham Board Policy WBP eleven-point-one-two revision seventeen entitled Investment Policy and Resolution Adopting the Investment Policy. Wyndham School District Chief Financial Officer, Mr. O'Banion, Robert O'Banion, is presenting on this today. Mr. O'Banion, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you Chairman, Vice Chair Johnson, and members. Please reference Tab D in your board packet this morning. Uh, today, as you mentioned, I'm presenting the Wyndham Board Policy eleven dot one-two, known as the Investment Policy. Uh, this is being presented for annual review in accordance with Chapter twenty-two fifty-six of the Texas Government Code. It's known as the Public Funds Investment Act. The act requires the investment officer to report to the Wyndham Board of Trustees any updates to conform to the government code. And there were no substantive changes to the policy, only some minor updates related to the unauthorized investments to comply with the recent changes in the government code. So we ask for your approval of the policy as presented along with the resolution adopting the investment policy. And at this time, I'll pause for any questions.
Mr. O'Banion, any questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the annual review of Wyndham Board Policy WBP dash eleven dot twelve, revision seventeen, the investment policy, and resolution adopting the investment policy as presented and that the chairman sign the resolution adopting the investment policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion from General Bill Welch. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from General Welch. I have a second from Dr. Rodney Burrow. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. O'Banion. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revision of Wyndham Board Policy WBP dash three-point-zero-zero revision three entitled Wyndham School District. Wyndham's General Counsel, Mr. Eric Brown, is at the podium and will be presenting on this. When you're ready, Mr. Brown, please proceed.
Thank you Chairman Nichols, members, Superintendent Hartman. The proposed revision to Board Policy three-zero-zero Wyndham School District adds Wyndham's administration of post-secondary programs, updates our mission statement, and updates terminology. The revision also includes changes for clarity and grammar. I'll pause for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, is this revision three or revision four?
Uh, that's a very good question. Could you answer that, please?
I think you said three and I believe it's four, but I could be wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Board Policy three-point-zero-zero. It's revision four. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Because the, um, because the, the actual policy that I'm seeing is three.
Um, it's three-point-zero-zero revision four, should be the clean version.
Okay, for the clean version. Got it, okay. So, uh, can we have a friendly amendment, uh, on the...
I think it's correct because it's policy three revision four, revision four of policy three.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Policy three-point-zero-zero, yes.
Okay, sounds good. So with that clarification, thank you, uh, Judge Francis. Is, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the proposed revision of Wyndham Board Policy WBP dash oh-three dash zero-zero revision four. Wyndham School District as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordice. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordice. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I again thank all of you for coming here today and for attending online. The next meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees will take place on Friday, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in Huntsville, Texas. There being no further business, the three-hundred-and-fiftieth meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is now adjourned. It is eight-fifty AM. And we will pick up with the, uh, the TBCJ meeting at nine o'clock.
That an officer was caught bringing in contraband or in an inappropriate relationship with an inmate on the shift, whether it be the coworkers, the supervisors. There was always some version of, oh, that person was just weak, or, oh, that person was just sorry. So as I was thinking about this, I said, you know, are, is there any academic research out there? Are there any publications? And what I found was, there's not. There's a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot of research, but there are several publications and some research that focus on the manipulation tactics that inmates use to compromise staff. I've spoken to some colleagues, one colleague from the University of Denver, who does a lot of work for the National Institute of Justice, and we were unable to find anything. Also ran some traps with Sam Houston University. So decided, you know what, maybe we need to do something about this, and we need to learn some about these people. So there's a solution to this blind spot that I believe will be very, very successful. This is the only real image that is in this presentation. So as a part of this, the Office of the Inspector General, the Special Prosecution Unit, and my office have entered into an agreement where, as a part of any plea agreement, pretrial diversion, non-prosecution agreement, one of the things that will be offered up and will be considered in those agreements is that the person who was arrested, the suspect, has to openly and fully debrief with a representative of my office, whether that be myself or some of the other representatives. I myself am a certified fraud examiner. I have six other certified fraud examiners on staff. And so we're going to begin the process of interviewing these people, and we're going to learn what we can about them. What we're going to utilize is, we're going to utilize a model called the Fraud Triangle. It was, go back one more, please. This model has been in place since 1953. A very noted criminalologist by the name of Donald Cressy put this together. It has stood the test of time. The Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, which is the global certifying body for fraud examination professionals, this is the model they use. And just an interesting tidbit about Donald Cressy as well, Donald Cressy is actually the person who thought of the RICO Act that was used to take it down organized crime throughout the United States. It was Donald Cressy who actually approached the FBI and the Justice Department way back when with an idea of, maybe we don't go after the individuals, maybe we go after the organizations. And, you know, Dr. Cressy has been gone for quite a while, but I never miss an opportunity to give him a shout out. He's kind of a personal hero. So the model that we're going to use, it is, like I said, it's called the Fraud Triangle. You can think of it as a three-legged stool. And the way it works is, in any type of occupational fraud, which includes things like corruption, bribery, asset misappropriation, all of those things, time after time after time, we found that these three components are present. Before we go into it any further, I will tell you and make sure that the room understands that this model does not excuse the behavior, it does not say that the behavior's okay, it seeks to understand the behavior. So there are three components of this. The first component is pressure. That's the motivation to do the thing. There's lots and lots of research on this. I've provided some examples up here. I will tell you that the number one is living beyond your means. I used to, when I taught this 15, 20 years ago, I would say Keeping Up With The Joneses. Now, when I teach it, I say Keeping Up With The Kardashians. It's living a lifestyle that is way beyond your ability to pay for that. But we also, and of course, you know, when you're living beyond your means, what happens is a lot of times people get in very significant debt, monstrous debt. I came across a guy one time that had $380,000 in credit card debt. You cannot live long enough, you will not live long enough to pay that off. We see addictions, we see addictions a lot. Addictions could be alcohol addictions, drug addictions, unfortunately come across sex addictions quite a bit, also lots of times gambling addictions and things of that nature. And then another pressure is organizational pressures. It's unrealistic performance expectations, too much work, not enough time. I'll tell you, as your auditor, any time that we go into an area and we see quotas, I start getting nervous when I see performance quotas that are tied to compensation. Doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it, but when you see quotas, that's kind of a thing that says, okay, you know, tune in your spidey senses here a little bit. So it's these pressures, and often these pressures are things that I just can't go tell somebody, hey, I need some money here. You know, they're embarrassing, typically embarrassing type things that you have to go in, and the reason why you need this money. The next component is opportunity. I have to be able to put my hand in the cookie jar. I think my platform did a pretty good job with that, but I'm not sure the hand that will be able to get it out of the cookie jar. If it was my hand, certainly not, because as Renee knows, I've got a cookie problem, and I'm not going to let go of the cookies, so I'll be walking around with a jar on my fist. But these opportunities, you know, really the first thing that you often see is weak or ineffective controls, a lack of supervision or management oversight, poor documentation of processes, specific nature of the job. In this particular situation with the people that we're going to be talking to, we know that in the correctional environment, whether they be working in the prison, whether they be community supervision officers, the very nature of the job allows you a lot of time that you're one-on-one with the people that you supervise. It's simply the nature of the job. And then too much trust. Too much trust comes up time and time and time again. Just a simple Google search, some of the organizations that get taken advantage the most are churches, because everybody in the church trusts everybody, youth sport leagues, booster clubs, things like that. Oftentimes, you know, in those scenarios, when you're on a board, or when you're, you know, you're trying to run a youth sports league, you don't get a whole lot of volunteers, and so you've got that one person that's going to volunteer to keep the books. But then we also let them do everything else associated with keeping the books, and next thing you know, you're out three, four hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, your little league just goes bankrupt. And then rationalization. Rationalization is, I've got to tell myself I'm not a bad person, I've got to talk myself into it. The number one, hands down, and this is not related to the corruption we're talking about, but in these cases, number one, when people take the money, without fail, I was going to pay it back. It's the very first one. Comes up every time I teach on a class, the judges actually saw me teaching in New York on video, the guy, very first thing he said, unsolicited, was, well, I was going to pay it back. That particular individual was a chief of probation quite some time ago. He funded his entire lifestyle using the county's credit card. And he started out was, I'm going to pay it back. I deserve a raise. That comes up all the time. These people got a raise, but I didn't. So why should I care? They talked themselves into it. I've seen this one before. Well, I've already gone this far, there's no turning back. I teach on a parole officer who, many, many years ago, got in a situation where they were accepting money from a parolee, and that case started out very, very small, and it grew into something extremely large, that involved the FBI, all of the above. Everyone else is doing it. This comes up all the time. Well, what about them? They're doing it too. We can often talk ourselves into this. And then you have this concept of culture, organizational cultures. When organizational cultures have issues, it's very easy for someone to say, you know, hey, these people don't care about me, I may as well go ahead and get mine. So some version of this comes up all the time. What I'll tell you is, you know, luckily, in my 30-year career, I've not had to do a lot of these investigations. I've had to do, you know, we'll say more than 10, you know, but the model fits every single time, with the caveat that it does not fit a sociopath or a psychopath, because they don't have to talk themselves into it. And so you kind of always have to be on the lookout for that. There is a documentary on Netflix, it's called All The Queen's Horses. A friend of mine, Kelly Richmond Pope, actually produced that, and it's about an individual by the name of Rita Cronwell, who several years ago bilked her city out of $52 million. And at the same time, they were laying off firefighters, they weren't buying fire trucks, they were laying off police officers, and she just continued taking the money. It's the largest municipal fraud in United States history. It's about an hour watch, it's free on YouTube, so if you want to watch it, it's actually a pretty good show. One of the other things we're going to look for is red flags. I'm a member of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, have been for well over 20 years. They put out publications every year and update the research. Since 2008, when this last, kind of went back, all the way back to 2008, 85% of all people that commit these acts demonstrate some form of red flag. As a part of this research, there is a hope that perhaps we can identify some trends, perhaps identify some red flags that maybe, you know, we didn't know about before that we could pay attention to. Often I talk to wardens, and I say, how many of you do the parking lot test? And everybody will raise their hand, and I'll ask them, does it work? And for those of you who don't know what the parking lot test is, you walk around the parking lot, and you go, hey, wait a minute, that car just cost a little too much to be here. Doesn't mean they're doing something wrong, it doesn't mean a person's taking money, it just means, hey, pay attention here. It's been, many, many years ago, right around the early 2000s, an employee who worked at HR won millions of dollars in the state lottery, and continued working for eight more years. I love you guys, but not me, not me, we'll see you later. I'll be around, and I'll give you, you know, we'll chat, but it's recognizing these clues, learning what they are, that perhaps can inform what we do. So these stack up, they go all the way back to 2008, I've been a member since then, these also fall out this way way before 2008. But, you know, your first one you have is living beyond your means, which leads to financial difficulties, unusually close association with a vendor or customer, control issues and unwillingness to share duties. Now, I'll tell you, not everybody who has control issues or unwillingness to share duties is committing fraud, as I believe Renee will say that every, every time we teach this in public, she points at me and says, hey, you know, that guy. So I use that story to say, when you see these things, it doesn't mean somebody's doing something wrong, it just means pay attention. Irritability, suspiciousness, defensiveness, a wheeler-dealer attitude, I've seen a wheeler-dealer attitude a lot, divorced family problems. And so when all these things start stacking up, I don't necessarily get concerned when I see one. But when I see them stacking up, I start getting a little bit concerned. But again, in this scenario where I believe we have a blind spot right now, where we don't really know a lot about the people engaging in this conduct, I'll be interested to find out what these red flags may be. So again, I got a little bit ahead of myself. You know, as a part of a plea deal, you know, any type of arrangements that's made by the Special Prosecutor's Office, we're going to interview these people, they're going to have to be completely and thoroughly honest. I know we have a couple of judges and some attorneys on the board. We will have provisions in place in the event that, you know, somebody sits down, and we're talking about, why did you bring in the cellphone, and they start telling me about, you know, this murder they committed three years ago, and so we'll have, we have safeguards in place for that. And we're going to learn from this. Now, I'll tell you, I told you, none of these images are real images, but I will tell you, in this one, what I, my prompt was, was provide an image of the most interesting auditor in the world. And if you can see it, it did a pretty good job. So as we collect this information, we're going to analyze it, we're going to learn, and we're going to share. It's the idea that we may discover some things that TDCJ can use in its training initiatives, perhaps it may inform, there may be a point at which we may find that there's a pattern of, these things start maybe at this point in somebody's career. If we learn that, and we learn what those pressures are, it would give TDCJ more of a toolkit to actually approach these things and prevent them from happening. Because remember, when you're talking about that fraud triangle, and you're not talking about a sociopath, and you're not talking about a psychopath, nobody, with rare instances, people don't come into this saying, hey, I'm going to go get a job, and then I'm going to do this thing, and I'm going to be a bad guy. I was teaching this to a group in TDCJ a couple of years ago, and there were some treatment people that were in the room, and one of the treatment specialists says, they tell themselves rational lies. And that really, really clicked with me. And, you know, a good example of that, and I guarantee you, everybody in this room can relate to it, is somebody at some point has stayed in a hotel with somebody who wanted to take some towels home. And almost without fail, they always say the same thing, well, this company is so big, and they're charging me this much for this hotel, they're not going to miss it at all. Everybody does it. Now, I'm not saying everybody, and I'm not going to check everybody's closets or anything like that, but, you know, it's a common thing, I think all of us have experienced that. And so that's a really good way of kind of explaining that rationalization concept. So we're going to take these trends, work on them, learn about them, and then provide them to the people who can take action. As a part of this, I introduced Dr. Wren earlier. She has, she heard about the research, she and I were talking about it, and very quickly identified that this might be a good opportunity for Sam Houston University to get involved. And so Dr. Wren has been working on that, she's been very good at getting me in the right room with the right people. Already, we've had a meeting with Andy Barbie to go through the appropriate protocols to get that done. So with that, I'd ask if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Serrito. Appreciate the comprehensive presentation, and I appreciate the fact that you started by recognizing that this is a process and a project that requires different stakeholders to be involved. And specifically, I appreciate you calling out not just our internal stakeholders and our board stakeholders through the Office of Inspector General, but also the good folks at the Special Prosecution Unit, as well as Dr. Wren and her colleagues at Sam Houston State University, who we all know from personal experience are great supporters and partners in initiatives like this. The second comment I have is that, you know, it's important when we have these kinds of discussions, and I know you agree, and you've reflected that in your comments, to put this type of discussion in context.
Yes.
Because I know from where I sit, I know other board members know from where they sit, I know Mr. Lumpkin knows from where he sits, I know Mr. Guerrero knows this from where he sits, that when we're talking about officers, and whether they're correctional officers or parole officers who go astray, who break the rules, who allow themselves to be corrupted in the way you're describing, we're talking about a very, very small fraction of our TDCJ workforce.
Yes, very much so. I've actually received the list to pull my sample from. There are some names on that list, but there are not hundreds of names on that list, there are, there are less than 50 on that list. And, you know, I know Bobby, Mr. Lumpkin, you know, the correctional officer workforce, you're roughly 17,000 FTEs, 19,000 FTEs, they're somewhere between 20 and 50 on that list. I just hadn't had time to get through it. But as you all know, you know, it's that bad apple, and it's, you know, the global auditing standards that I'm required to follow, I have global auditing standards and US government auditing standards. No amount of corruption or fraud is immaterial. So often auditors can look at an error and say, yes, that was an error, but in the grand scheme of the organization, it's not a material error. This stuff can be so pervasive, if not addressed, that the standards I have to follow mandate that no amount, even the smallest amount, is material.
And I appreciate that comment, and I think you know where I'm going, which is that we focus on this, because as you say, any level of corruption is, needs to be addressed appropriately. But at the same time, we also want to make sure that our valued correction staff, our valued parole officer staff, understand that this board understands that this is an issue that is addressed to a specific, small number of individuals, and does not reflect on the great work that they're doing each and every day. The second point of context is that we often thank our friends at the legislature for their support, and again, I think your comments just point out the need for us as a board to again, thank the legislature for its support in increasing the compensation that our hard-working correctional officers, parole officers, and others receive, because the obvious impact of that, given your presentation, is that some of those pressures that you say would otherwise lead people to do things they shouldn't do are being lessened. So that was the second point of context that I wanted to provide. But with that, any other questions or comments from members of the board? Ambassador Siv?
Thank you, Chairman. I learned something from you today, and I was quite amused when you mentioned the parking lot test. A friend of mine told me once that when you go to HEB, park as far away as possible from the entrance. Walking there and then pushing your grocery cart back will give you some fitness exercise. And now I have to keep looking for the most expensive car in the lot. But, you know, I never seen a Ferrari or a Lamborghini at a parking lot of HEB.
That's correct.
Maybe when you drive those kind of cars, you don't need to go to grocery shopping, right?
Fair enough, yes. For a moment there, I thought he was calling me fat, telling me I need to...
But it's a good, it's a good point you made about parking lot test, thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments, General?
I'm a big believer in the preventive process. I mean, it's better to prevent it than to have to go through this process of identifying why and all the rest. And Mr. Hinajos, I know you've got a new role in training, and we've talked in the past about this to other training people, but I think not only for fraud and corruption, but also for the introduction of contraband into our facilities, that we need to have really good, clear training processes where we can have a discussion of case studies and the consequences of the actions of the people that were involved in these case studies. I think it's critically important for our initial training, and also for our recurring training. And if Mr. Lumpkin and Mr. Hinajos can also be engaged in this, so that we not only have bad outcomes, we have a preventive process that we can work on as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And so if it wasn't clear prior, the people that you're talking about introducing the contraband, that is our target audience. Those are the people that we are going to do this interview, these interviews on. So I want to make sure that was very clear to the room. And then also echo something that the chairman said. Again, I mentioned I started as a correctional officer 30 years ago. All of the correctional officers that I've ever encountered are just as bothered by this. When this happens, they take it very personally. It is a betrayal of their trust on those shifts, and it is, well, you guys know what I mean. You know what I mean, is when you've been in that scenario where you work with someone, where the next thing you know, they're getting walked out with handcuffs, everybody on that shift is just as angry with them as anybody reading the newspaper. And so, like I said, it's small, but the small can be very pervasive and cause lots and lots of problems.
Thank you. Very good discussion, very good comments by the board members. Anything in addition? If not, Mr. Serrito, thank you for your presentation. And there being no further business, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Audit and Review Committee is now adjourned. The 243rd meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. During this meeting, the board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the board present for this meeting include myself, Eric Nichols, Vice Chair Faith Johnson, Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Sishan Siv, Pastor Nate Sprinkle, Sidney Zeicher, General Bill Welch, and Tom Fordice. A quorum of the board is present, and the meeting is now declared open. This meeting is being conducted in person here at the Cambria Hotel in North Austin, and is also being broadcast on the Texas Department of Criminal Justice YouTube channel. It is 9:33 a.m. I would now ask TBCJ member Pastor Nate Sprinkle to introduce TDCJ Chaplain Billy Holmes to offer a word of prayer as we start our meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Nichols. Before we begin with a word of prayer this morning, I'd like to introduce TDCJ Chaplain Billy Holmes. Mr. Holmes has served with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice for 40 years, 30 of those years in corrections, including time as a correctional sergeant, and the last 10 years as a chaplain with the agency. He's also been a pastor in the Huntsville community for 30 years, and is currently enrolled in PSR Seminary and holds certification in CPE. Throughout his years of service, Chaplain Holmes has performed countless weddings, funerals, baptisms, counseling sessions, and more, always with a heart for ministering to both staff and inmates. His greatest hope and prayer is to bless and serve as many people as possible through spiritual care and encouragement. Staff Chaplain Holmes, correct. Staff Chaplain Holmes, would you do us the honor of opening our meeting with a word of prayer this morning? Thank you.
Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank thee for allowing us to be here once again in the land of the living. We pray blessings assuredly upon this great board that you have assembled, Master. We thank thee, oh Lord God, for the great state of Texas, and for all those that have assembled here today. For truly we are grateful for what thou have already done, for we are believers that know that you're going to do even more greater. We pray blessings upon our Executive Director, Mr. Bobby Lumpkin, that you may continually use him in all his endeavors, to do all that he could possibly do in this season, to bring about even more of a positive movement within our agency. We thank thee for what our eyes have seen and what our ears have heard thus far, and we know that you are yet still on the throne doing all things. For in my conclusion of my prayer, Master, we ask for only one thing of you today, that you breathe on us, Master, that we may receive the anointing of your Holy Ghost, to move forward in life and be productive. We ask these blessings in the matchless name of our Lord and our Savior, Christ the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Chaplain Holmes.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Sprinkle, and thank you, Chaplain Holmes, for lifting us up this morning. And we use this opportunity to spotlight and learn more about the great work that is being done. and learn more about the great work that is being done with our chaplaincy across this, uh, this agency. And so I sure hope that you will continue to do the great work that you're doing and also to carry the word back from our board that we so much appreciate the work that those in chaplaincy are doing every day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
As a courtesy to speakers and guests in the meeting, please turn your electronic devices to the silent or vibrate mode. We appreciate that very much. Uh, I would also like to recognize public officials and/or staff representatives with us here today. I believe that, uh, today, uh, we have physically present with us in the room, uh, Reagan Stewart from the LBB. I spoke with Mike Ward from the Texas Senate a little bit earlier. We also have Chair Marsha Moberly from the Board of Pardons and Paroles, uh, with us here today. Appreciate you being here, Chair Moberly. And also Tim McDonald in, uh, in leadership at the Board of Pardons and Paroles. We appreciate each of you and we also appreciate all representatives of public officials who may be joining us online today. Of course, we appreciate everyone being present here, uh, today for our meeting. The Texas Board of Criminal Justice is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics as well as for public comments on issues within its jurisdiction as provided in Board Rule one fifty-one point four. Persons interested in speaking at today's meeting were required to complete and submit a registration card at least ten minutes prior to the meeting's posted start time. As no cards were received prior to the required deadline, the board will not hear any public presentation on posted agenda topics today or public comments on issues within the board's jurisdiction. Next, uh, uh, we do a very important recognition that is, as all of you have seen, a number of us are wearing our purple ribbons, uh, our, uh, purple apparel. We've got, uh, a beautiful purple jacket down the, down the, uh, row here. And the reason why we do that is the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence has affected and continues to affect communities across Texas. Such violence results from a pattern of physical, sexual and/or psychological abuse that leaves lasting scars on individuals, families and entire communities. Some of the many costs to victims and to children of victims include increased incidence of depression, acute and chronic health and mental health conditions, developmental problems and aggressive or delinquent behavior. Every year we recognize these numbers and we don't recognize them just to read statistics. We recognize them understanding that each one of these numbers represents a human being who's been impacted by domestic violence. In two thousand and twenty-four, a hundred and sixty-one Texans were killed by intimate partners in forty-two counties across the state. Eight others were injured. Seventeen friends, family or bystanders were killed and a hundred and four adults and minor children lost a parent. There can sometimes be a stereotype narrative around domestic violence, but this issue, like any other, cannot and should not be stereotyped. Each instance of this domestic violence, as I said, and I'm going to repeat myself, impacts one or more individual human beings. A hundred and thirty-seven of those murdered in two thousand and twenty-four were women and twenty-four were men. Why do we recognize this month for this impact? It is because the, the mission of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice includes as a core element the protection and support of crime victims. The Texas criminal justice system plays a significant role in addressing domestic violence by holding domestic violence offenders accountable for their actions, enhancing victim safety, attempting to disrupt the cycle of violence resulting in intervention opportunities for victims and offenders, attempting to break the generational cycle and learned effect of domestic violence on children and sending an important message that there will be real consequences for committing acts of domestic violence. Thus, we not only recognize victims of domestic violence, we see and hear you. And please know that the women and men of TDCJ will continue to work with and support you through our Victim Services Division and in every other way that we possibly can. Together, we remain steadfast in our commitment to a future where every Texas, every Texan can live free from violence, empowered by safety, dignity and hope. And I believe Ms. Zeiker, you might have some additional thoughts as well.
I do. Um, so this year I want to take some time to recognize or kind of tell a story of one of the victims that I have the privilege of working with. As the chairman said, um, domestic violence impacts not only the victim themselves, but also their families. And so one of these survivors that I have, well, a family member of, um, a victim that I have worked with, um, lost her adult daughter to domestic violence several years ago. And in recognition of this month, we've had a lot of contact and a lot of conversations about what this looks like for her and how this has shaped her life. Now, what I love about this victim and so many of the family members who've lost loved ones to domestic violence and those who have overcome and come out of domestic violence is the strength that they show to all of us. Um, we can only do what we do. We can only create new and better programs. We can only work to rehabilitate and to understand that sort of victimization uh, with the, um, thoughts and input from other survivors. So this specific individual, this specific victim has worked very closely. Um, she's even spoken to our, um, to TDCJ's Victim Services Department about her experience. Um, the offender from her daughter's murder actually is housed within TDCJ now. And she works with me on a very regular basis to create new services. So with that, I think it's really important for us to remember that you're likely rubbing shoulders with someone who has experienced domestic violence themselves or with their families. And for us to just hold space this month for being thankful for those who are willing to share their experiences and help us do better in this space. And also remember that it, this is a very hard thing to overcome. And so thank you for allowing time for this and space for this. And thank you to all of you who are, who are standing with all of the survivors, um, by wearing your purple. And, um, thank you to that specific victim.
Thank you, Ms. Zeiker, and we appreciate your work on these issues, not only as a member of this board, but also the work and that you and your colleagues do with, uh, with Crime Stoppers. So, uh, and I appreciate your recognition of all of the great work that, uh, TDCJ is doing internally, uh, to help, uh, support, uh, victims of crime across the state. The Texas Board of Criminal Justice recognizes TDCJ employees who have dedicated twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five and even fifty years of service to the state of Texas. These individuals represent the strong commitment of this agency staff system-wide. Our board and our Executive Director, Mr. Bobby Lumpkin, express our deepest gratitude for their continued service. During the, and the same thing with these stats. Every, I read these stats, but every, I know every one of these numbers represents a valued individual who has made tremendous contributions to the success of this agency. So during the months of September and October of two thousand and twenty-five, fifty-nine employees attained twenty-five years of service. Forty-five employees attained thirty years of service. Fourteen employees attained thirty-five years of service. Fourteen employees attained forty years of service and two employees attained forty-five years of service. We are displaying this list of these most valued employees for those in attendance to read. And all of the individual names of these employees will also be submitted for inclusion in the official minutes of this board meeting. The Board of Criminal Justice congratulates each and every one of you as employees and thanks you for your unwavering loyalty and dedication to the citizens of Texas. As a further symbol of our appreciation, each of you will be receiving a board certificate along with a personal letter of gratitude because we do appreciate you each and every day. The next agenda topic covers consent items, uh, which are under the, uh, uh, the tab that you have in your book, which is TAB with a, uh, capital B. Oh, I have to do, I have to do some other recognitions. Oh my goodness, okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna recognize some individuals also. All right. And how could I forget this? Because this is a, a, a very, very, very important meeting. Because you know, as you, as you work on this board, I know I speak for the entire board, you kind of get comfortable with each other and you kind of get comfortable with where everybody sits. Everybody on this, uh, board tends to have a particular place that they like to sit. Like, uh, like, uh, somebody likes to sit on the far edge down there, is that right? So, uh, so we, we tend to be, uh, comfortable among each other, but we obviously have a very, very important and a significant, uh, change to our constitution up here at the table. So, uh, first I have the, uh, uh, the, the, the honor to recognize our current TDCJ Executive Director, Mr. Bobby Lumpkin, who took office following his appointment by this board at its August meeting. And, uh, and this is the first meeting, Mr. Lumpkin, and you look pretty comfortable to me, uh, at which you're sitting here to my left as opposed to the many times that you appeared before this board at the podium. Mr. Lumpkin's role, we've talked a lot about Mr. Lumpkin, but it's appropriate to talk a little bit more about him today. Mr. Lumpkin's role as Executive Director is a continuation of thirty-five years of dedicated and valued service with TDCJ. Before being appointed to the role of Executive Director by the board, he held the role of TDCJ's Chief of Operations. He began his career in nineteen ninety as a correctional officer with TDCJ and rose through the correctional ranks across multiple units. Mr. Lumpkin was promoted to Assistant Warden in nineteen ninety-nine and went on to serve in several key leadership roles, including Agency Accreditation Manager in the Administrative Review and Risk Management Division, a Deputy Director in the Private Facility Contract Monitoring and Oversight Division, Director of the Manufacturing, Agribusiness and Logistics Division and Director of the Correctional Institutions Division, where he was responsible for overseeing operations at over a hundred facilities within TDCJ. As you all know, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, Mr. Lumpkin's credentials to hold this role are impressive. He holds a Master of Science in Criminal Justice Management and Leadership and a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, both from San Houston State University that we recognized just a minute ago. He has also contributed significantly to corrections at the national level. Mr. Lumpkin has served in leadership roles with the American Correctional Association, including as a Commissioner on Accreditation, Chair of the Correctional Industry Committee and as a Member of the Board of Governors. His service with the National Correctional Industries Association includes roles as Chairman of the Board, as President and as immediate past president. Additionally, Mr. Lumpkin maintains longstanding affiliations with the Correctional Peace Officers Foundation and the American Probation and Parole Association. And at our state level, he is the immediate past president of the Texas Corrections Association and a Member of the Texas Public Employees Association. Our board, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice, has the highest level of appreciation and respect for everything that Mr. Lumpkin has accomplished during his service to the state of Texas. And one of the things we value and respect the most is Mr. Lumpkin's full commitment to the continuous improvement, efficiency and modernization of agency operations. In his short time as Executive Director, he has already displayed full commitment to continued improvement, efficiency and modernization. So, Mr. Lumpkin, we as a board truly appreciate your thirty-five years of service to the agency and your continued commitment to TDCJ and the state of Texas generally. So I'm going to put you on the spot once again. Over and above your comments that, uh, you gave at the August board meeting, uh, any thoughts now that you're settling into that chair and the many roles that you have to play as our Executive Director?
Thank you, Chairman Nichols, Vice Chair Johnson, Secretary Burrows, members. Just, I have more of a report in the Exec Director's comments to talk about the transition and the position, but absolutely, uh, appreciate the support and, and trust in myself to, to lead beside the thirty-two thousand men and women, uh, in this room and across the state, day in, day out, uh, meeting not only the mission of our agency, but humanizing what we do and, and treating everyone with dignity, respect when it comes to our staff and certainly comes to those that were charged with overseeing, whether incarcerated or on supervision. But again, just very humbled and, and, and served with humility, always have, but certainly again, appreciate the support and, and the conversations we've already had. A lot of us have met one-on-one and going forward, but I'll have some more confidence in a little bit, but thank you.
Well, thank you. And let's, uh, give you, I know you've gotten a number of rounds of applause, well deserved. Let's give you another one. And so, Mr. Lumpkin, in this role, now you get to, uh, present your own recognitions. And so I understand that, uh, you're presenting our next one, which is the, uh, recognition of your replacement in the role of Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Ron Hudson. Uh, Mr. Hudson, if you would please join us at the podium. And Mr. Lumpkin, whenever you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Nichols. And yes, I certainly had the pleasure to, uh, fill the Chief Operations Officer job here recently. And, and so this morning, I would like to recognize Mr. Ron Hudson as the new Chief Operations Officer for the agency. Mr. Hudson began his career in nineteen ninety-two as a correctional officer at the Huntsville unit after graduating from San Houston State University with a bachelor's in business administration. After serving as correctional officer for, for five years, Ron was promoted to the Manufacturing, Agribusiness and Logistics Division as an accountant. Subsequently was then promoted to the Division Manager for Garment and later promoted to the, the Division Manager of Transportation and Supply. In two thousand and twelve, he was promoted to the Correctional Institutions Division as the Director of Laundry, Food Service and Supply, which of course, as we know, is a, is a huge responsibility, uh, in, in feeding over a hundred, at the time, over a hundred and fifty thousand that were incarcerated at the time. In two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Hudson returned to Manufacturing, Agribusiness and Logistics Division as a Deputy Division Director. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, he joined the Facilities Division as, as the Deputy Division Director. And then in September of twenty-two, was selected as a Division Director for the Facilities Division. Uh, Ron, Ron certainly brings extensive operational experience and proven leadership, uh, to this role. Uh, he'll serve our agency well and just, uh, for, for many reasons, of course. Uh, strategic vision, commitment to excellence, along with many in this room that have commitment to excellence. But it will be instrumental in driving the agency's growth and success. And so this morning, if you please join me, congratulate Mr. Hudson on his new role of Chief Operations Officer.
Mr. Hudson, we, uh, you know, you've been up the podium many times. You know how much, as a board, we appreciate your contributions, uh, to the agency and to our great state over the, the, your career. And we look forward to seeing your continued success and contributions in this new role. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, sir. And Chairman Nichols, uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, Dr. Burrow and, and all the members of the board and, and especially our new Exec Director, Mr. Lumpkin. I've been serving with Mr. Lumpkin since the mid-nineties, working with him, faring for many, many years. And your comments about Mr. Lumpkin, you know, moving this agency forward, you know, I can't look forward to that more than anything else. Knowing that the team that's here now and the division directors that we have, you know, and then being out on the units and saying all the positive things that we've got going on right now out on the units and just playing a role in supporting those division directors and my, and my, and my two chiefs that I work with and Mr. Lumpkin and the board, you know, we're going to do great things together because I'm, we've got lots and lots of great things going on out there. And I just, you know, I look forward to serving the men and women of this agency, not the, not only the ones that work here, but mostly importantly, the ones that are incarcerated and just continuing to see those lives transform and moving those back into society and continue to change those people's hearts every day. And you know, and. to change those people's hearts every day, and, you know, and, you know, and just have the opportunity to, to do that, just excites me to be able to continue to serve this agency, even, 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 you know, doing this for thirty-three years and continuing to, to continue to do what I love, that's what excites me more than anything, is that, just that, just that continuing to be able to support, you know, TDCJ and the state of Texas and just continuing to move forward. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir, and your enthusiasm is certainly infectious, and we're all glad to be infected this morning, so thank you, sir. The, next two recognitions will be presented by Mr. Rene Hinaosa, who until recently, served in the role of TDCJ parole division director, but who has, within this past week, been appointed by Mr. Lumpkin to serve in the new role of, new role for him, of division director for TDCJ's training and leader development division. So, Mr. Hinaosa, first of all, congratulations, as I told you earlier, on your new and very important role, and the board looks forward to seeing your contributions in what is gonna be a new role for you, but as you transition from the role as parole division director to your new role with training and leader development across the agency, we understand that you would like to recognize the new parole division region one director, Kristy McCoy, and the new parole division director of specialized programs, Angelica Rodriguez. So, all of you are up here at the podium, we had a chance to visit a little bit, had a nice conversation before the meeting. Mr. Hinaosa, when you're ready, please begin.
Thank you Chairman Nichols, and just before I begin, General, I heard your comments and well noted, and we're gonna take care of business for that. So Chairman Nichols and Mr. Lumpkin, members of the board, it gives me great pleasure to first introduce Ms. Crystal McCoy, the parole division's new region one director. In her new role, Ms. McCoy will oversee the division's east Texas region of the state, which is, if you can believe this, Texarkana, all the way down to Beaumont. This region consists of fourteen district parole offices, ten thousand parole clients, and one residential reentry center, which is in Beaumont. Crystal began her career in two thousand seven as an institutional parole officer in the Palestine Institutional Parole Office after earning her bachelor of science degree in political science from Texas College in Tyler. Go Steers, in case you're wondering.
There you go.
Since then, Crystal has held many key roles within the division, to include unit supervisor, parole supervisor, and most recently, she was the assistant regional director in region one, which is in Tyler. Crystal is a focused leader who cares not only about her staff and is passionate about their success, but is always willing to go the extra mile. She's one of the most genuine people I know. Please help me in congratulating Ms. Crystal McCoy.
Ms. McCoy, congratulations again, and thank you for stepping forward to take on this leadership role. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, sir. Good morning Chairman Nichols, members of the board, Mr. Lumpkin and Mr. Hinaosa. I'm honored and humbled to stand before you today as the newly selected region one director of the parole division. I want to express my sincere gratitude for this recognition and for the trust placed in me to serve in this capacity. Also, I want to thank my family, my friends, and my colleagues for their unwavering support through my journey. Their encouragement has meant everything. I look forward to working alongside the, our dedicated staff to promote public safety, support successful reintegration, and uphold the agency's values. Thank you again for your support, and I am excited for what lies ahead. Thank you.
You.
Again, it's an honor to introduce the parole division's new specialized programs section director, Ms. Angelica Rodriguez. In her new role, Ms. Rodriguez will oversee the division's specialized officers training program, the division's treatment programs, which includes substance use, sex offender treatment, and cognitive programs, and also all of our grant programs. Ms. Rodriguez began her career over fifteen years ago as a parole officer in our San Antonio Metro office, after earning her bachelor of science degree in criminal justice from Eastern New Mexico University. Go Greyhounds, in case you're wondering.
There you go.
Since then, she held many other critical jobs within the division, to include unit supervisor, parole officer four, and most recently, she was the assistant section director in specialized programs. Angelica is a passionate leader who cares about her staff and is committed to making a positive change in people's lives. In her free time, I understand that she spends time with her husband, her two sons, and her two pets, Bella and Bo. Please help me congratulate Ms. Angelica Rodriguez.
Good morning Chairman, board members, Mr. Lumpkin. I just want to sincerely say thank you to the leadership team for this incredible opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the journey that lies ahead, and again, thank you so much, Mr. Hinaosa and our leadership team. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and thank you so much for the, the important work that you're helping to lead, because that is, that, the type of work is, is, as you know, I'm, I'm telling you, everything that you know is to why you're living the mission that you're living, but that type of work that you're doing in terms of that programming, and that's gonna impact so many who are in our criminal justice system, is, 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 is a great credit to you and those with whom you work. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next recognition will be presented by TDCJ rehabilitation and reentry division director, Ms. April Zamora. Ms. Zamora, I understand you would like to recognize the new director of female programs, Jill Cale, and if you would both please come up, I see you coming up right now, and Ms. Zamora, if you're ready, please begin, and please, as part of your recognition of Ms. Cale, please also give us in the public some background and context on the role that Ms. Cale will be serving.
Absolutely. Chairman, Mr. Lumpkin, members of the board, Ms. Cale has filled the director of female programs position. This position is a position that we created in response to a review that we had. We had a consultant come in and look at our female programs and our unit operations regarding female programs. So, we did contract with the Moss Group to take a look at what we were doing within the female population, and as a result of that population, several recommendations were made. Within those recommendations, one of them was that we look at our programming, how are we addressing the female population, and then how do we make it better? One of the things that we did collectively was Jennifer Cosby became the region six director, and all of our prisons went under one person that could really, really concentrate on our prison operations. Then, we had a position within the rehabilitation and reentry division, we looked at it, and we said, all right, we can make a director of female programs, and we chose Ms. Cale. One of the greatest things about that, that whole process was Ms. Cale was then our regional director in region six, so she was already very familiar with female operations. We had several people apply, and Ms. Cale really just did stand out. Then Ms. Cosby said, well, guess what, I have an office in my region six office, and so they are paired together and just running around the region together, and you know me, I, I asked several times throughout that region, before we even posted, who's doing stuff now, and there were so many great applicants. But Ms. Cale has been looking at programs throughout the region since she joined this team. The Moss Group also wanted to look at, how do we do assessments? Well, Ms. Cale is a certified trainer in our TRAS assessments. She's been working on our seeking safety project, which is our human trafficking project we had through the governor's office, and after we finished that project, we were able to maintain through state agency funds. She's also worked on several innovative projects that we had. She helped stand up our Bartlett unit. So although that's a male project, we look to expand that in the female population. She's worked with our Strive program to guarantee females jobs in jobs that are CTE and work-ready programs, so getting women who have gone through welding, electrical trades, bringing in veterans programs for females, and working with our veterans coordination. But Ms. Ms. Cale has worked in our division since transferring over from UTMB, so securing that job with us as a reentry case manager on Lane Murray unit. And so I'm, I'm going through this in a different layout than we would typically lay out how Ms. Cale came to us, because I want you to know why. So she originally started as a clinical manager at UTMB. So she has that medical background, she understands the mental health of the female population, but while on the Lane Murray unit as a reentry case manager, she dealt with that reentry process, the difficulties of housing somebody who has to return potentially to an abusive home. This is Domestic Violence Prevention Month and Awareness Month. So a lot of times, we will see in the female population that we are talking about, where are you going home to, is an appropriate home plan. We see it a lot in the Strive program, talking through, let's go to an Oxford house, let's go to a different type of home plan that is a safe and sheltered home plan. Jill has been amazing in that process in teaching case managers safety plans, let's discuss safety plans, being able to bring in experts to talk to women about that. So, in discussions with the Moss Group, that is one thing that stood out when I went and talked to them about, how do I hire a female programs director? And so Jill's name kept coming to the top of the list. So, she has also been a supervisor in region six, she then became my regional director, and I can tell you, I can't think of anybody better to walk the journey with Jennifer Cosby to change the direction of our female programs. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce to you Jill Cale, because I think she will do an amazing job for this agency in that role.
Ms. Cale, thanks for stepping forward and taking leadership in this very, very important role. Would you, would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, thank you Chairman and members of the board. I just want to say that I'm incredibly honored to be selected to fill this role, and I look forward to the growth and impact that we're gonna continue to have on the female populations that we serve.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda topic covers consent items, and these are the items that are under the cap B tab. Are there any amendments, objections, or abstentions to the proposed consent items? Hearing none, the consent items posted for this meeting's agenda will stand approved. The next item on our board's agenda is the TDCJ parole division spotlight. This item on our agenda, which we have at all of our meetings, highlights examples of how the agency's parole officers, and we already heard a little bit about this through the recognitions we just did, are out there every day making our Texas community safer through supervision and support of those released from TDCJ facilities to parole. Mr. Hinaosa, again, as part of your transition from parole division director to your new role, I understand you will be introducing to us today parole officer Shontez Aldridge, and when you are ready, sir, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you again Chairman Nichols, Mr. Lumpkin, and members of the board. It's a great, great privilege for me to introduce to the board parole officer Shontez Aldridge. She's a parole officer here in the great, great city of Austin. Ms. Aldridge began her career in two thousand and fifteen after she completed her bachelor of arts degree from Texas State University down the street in San Marcos. Ms. Aldridge is assigned to supervise clients on the therapeutic community caseload. That's our TC, or as we call it, our substance use caseload, and in my opinion, that's one of our most challenging caseloads to supervise, especially here in Austin. Ms. Shontez not only cares about the mission of the agency, but she truly cares about the success of our clients, so please help me welcome parole officer Shontez Aldridge.
Thank you. I was afraid this podium would be too tall for me.
I think you're, I think you're doing just fine, and, and, and please proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. First, I would like to say this is an honor and a privilege to be here before you all today. Thank you. I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Nichols, all of the parole board members, Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Hinaosa, for their time and recognition for this prestigious honor. My name is Shontez Aldridge. I'm currently a parole officer out of the Austin Two District Parole Office. I'm a highly dedicated and committed parole officer and have served in this exciting field since two thousand and fifteen. My passion for working in the parole field began early in life. It was shaped by witnessing the many challenges that were encountered and faced by many individuals that were very close and dear to me. I was motivated by a desire to understand human behavior in an effort to assist individuals and to successfully assist in redirecting their path. I pursued an education in psychology, earning a bachelor's degree from the Texas State University, go Bobcats, and an associate's degree from Austin Community College, go Riverbets.
Yeah, all right.
With over a decade of experience, I have worked and have been exposed to a multitude of individuals from diverse backgrounds. I firmly believe that my work is grounded in empathy, accountability, and the belief that meaningful change is possible in everyone I encounter. I strive and commit to a consistent and supportive presence in the lives of those advocating the parole system. My passion is hoping to transform setbacks and opportunities for growth in every avenue of our client's life. Our clients deserve every opportunity to succeed in their personal and professional life. While working in this field as a parole officer with the substance abuse caseload, I've had the privilege of supervising Ms. Suzanne Rothel. During this supervision period, I've seen Ms. Rothel successfully complete phase two outpatient treatment. She's been very thorough, disciplined, and has actively engaged in many opportunities that the parole is placed before her in the aid of her sobriety. She is currently celebrating her four-year anniversary of sobriety that was marked on May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Rothel has been focusing on healing and rebuilding relationships that were impacted by her past. She actively chose to reconnect with her family and close friends in order to rebuild the trust through open communication. One of her major accomplishments was building her current home that she is currently residing in. I applaud you for that. She initiated this project on her own free will and received assistance and support from her parents. She achieved her desired goal through self-determination, sacrifice, and resilience. Ms. Rothel has expressed that the experience of building her home gave her valuable hands-on skills in construction, and most importantly, strengthening her bond with her family, which is priceless. Ms. Rothel has also recently launched her own small business as a caregiver. She has been successful in rebuilding her credit, establishing her reputation in this emotional field, and making financial means to care for her loved ones. These impressive, these impressive and important accomplishments demonstrate financial stability, responsibility, and commitment for long-term success. Ms. Rothel is also currently continuing to participate in Alcoholics Anonymous. She attends meetings regularly and is working closely with her sponsor to focus on her recovery. Her continued commitment has allowed, has allowed her to sponsor another individual in her care to effectively guide them through their recovery. Her future goals are to focus on continuing her education and expanding her business, while also maintaining her sobriety, giving back to her community. Please allow me to introduce Ms. Suzanne Rothel.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here and for stepping forward, and it's a very brave thing for you to do, but you understand how important it is for this board to, to recognize the work that's being done through our parole division, number one, number two, to recognize those, those members of our populations who have made a successful reentry, just as you have made a successful reentry. So thank you so much for being here, and please, if you want to share a few words with us, we'd be glad to have them.
Sure, thank you. Good morning. It's an honor to be here this morning. My name is Susan Rothel, and I was released from TDCJ on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. I want to start by acknowledging that prison was not an easy experience for me. Still, I took advantage of every educational class and program that was available to me, and through that dedication and your mercy, I was able to make my second parole. I'd like to sincerely thank the board for granting me parole. My family and I are extremely grateful for that opportunity. I also appreciate being given the chance to speak to you today about my experience and the positive strides I've been able to make since my release. During my time incarcerated, I learned so much from listening to other women's stories. I realized how often addiction and trauma lie at the root of criminal behavior, and I applaud the board and the parole division for recognizing that reality and supporting programs that promote healing and recovery. I'm living proof that those efforts are not in vain. We can recover, and we do recover. Two classes that had a lasting impact on me were the parenting class and the customer service specialist course. Both were valuable tools that I still use today, helping me grow personally and professionally. The teachers were knowledgeable, supportive, and genuinely dedicated to helping us succeed. I'm especially I'm especially proud of the lifetime certification I earned from the Customer Service Specialist Class, which remains a meaningful accomplishment for me. If I'm being honest, the requirements upon release were challenging. I don't believe I could have met them without the incredible support system I had. My family employed me for the first three months, which allowed me to meet my work requirements while staying close to them and focusing on my recovery. That foundation helped me build stability and fully engage in a recovery community. My sobriety and recovery program remain the cornerstone of my success. Upon release, I entered the Phase Two Aftercare Group and was fortunate to work with one of your counselors, Ms. Tena Hollands. She went above and beyond to help and support me in my sobriety. She listened, encouraged, and challenged me to grow, and she believed in me before I fully believed in myself. That meant everything during such a vulnerable and fragile time, right after release. With her guidance and the support of many others, I celebrated four years of sobriety this past May. In recovery, I've worked hard to rebuild relationships and make amends for my past actions. Rebuilding trust takes time, but step by step, I've been able to heal and strengthen the relationships that matter most. I continue to work closely with my sponsor and now have the privilege of sponsoring someone else in recovery. Four months ago, I started my own small business called Susan Rothel Services. At first, I accepted any kind of honest work I could find to build something steady for myself. And little by little, my path led me towards caregiving. And now I'm working full-time as a private caregiver, which has turned out to be the most meaningful work. Building a client base and caring for others has been deeply rewarding. It's given me both independence and a chance to give back. I would also like to recognize my parole officer, Ms. Aldridge. From the beginning, she has treated me with dignity and respect, something I cannot overstate the importance of when you're rebuilding self-worth. I am forever grateful for her professionalism and encouragement. She is a tremendous asset to the parole division. Lastly, I want to thank the parole board and the parole division for the opportunity to be on parole and to speak today. I've learned that recovery is a journey, it's not a destination, and I'm committed to continuing that journey every day. Thank you so much for your support and for recognizing my efforts.
Well, thank you so much for your comments. And Ms. Aldridge, thank you so much for the work that you do, which is clearly such an important part of allowing us, you know, we talk about programs, we talk about all these things, but to be able to hear from individuals who have been impacted by these programs, it has tremendous meaning for us. So congratulations to you both. And then also, I think I neglected to give a couple other shout-outs. If you're talking about that Customer Service Specialist Program, I believe that may be the program, maybe somebody can correct me, that's sponsored through one of our industry partners, Southwest Airlines, I think is maybe one of the sponsors of that. And then also, a very important shout-out, and one of the other reasons why we do these presentations is that this is a credit to the work that's being done by the Board of Partners in Paroles. So Chair Moberly, I know you're out there. We appreciate the work that you all are doing. And again, the success story that starts with you as an individual, but it also requires a number of different stakeholders and people along the way to help support your journey. So thank you both very, very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Purchases and Contracts Over $1 Million. TDCJ's Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ron Steffah, will be presenting today. Mr. Steffah, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you and good morning Chairman Nichols, board members, Mr. Lumpkin. I will be presenting 12 purchases before you today for your consideration and approval. They can be found on pages 29 through 30 behind Tab D of your booklet. Item one is an increase to the fiscal year 2425 contract for residential and outpatient substance abuse treatment services with Treatment Associates of Victoria. This is due to an increase in utilization. It's an increase from the amount previously approved in June of 2025. Items two through 11 are increases to the fiscal year 2627 contracts with the Texas Correctional Office on offenders with medical impairments and their contracts with the local mental health authorities. Those are for case management and continuity of care. And these increases incorporate the exceptional items that we received just this last session. Item 12 is the calendar year, calendar year 26 through 30. It's a contract for electricity services for 53 units that are in deregulated areas of the state, and we are seeking a 10% variance due to any fluctuation in usage. And I'll pause for any questions.
So, Mr. Steffah, with respect to the variance, would you just explain what that variance is intended to allow for?
Yes, sir. We'll contract for these electricity services with estimated usage amounts. And to the degree, and it's largely dependent upon the weather, but to the degree that we have fluctuations in usage, that bill can vary. So what we'll do is we'll request the 10% variance that will account for that increase, should it occur.
Thank you. Any other questions from the, or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, you do, Mr. Chairman. Let me find it here. Here it is. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the purchases and contracts over $1 million as presented.
I have a motion on this item from Judge Johnson, Vice Chair Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I had competing seconds, but I heard Pastor Sprinkle in there, so I'll give Pastor Sprinkle the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Steffah. The next item on our agenda is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding the Annual Review of Board Policy BP 14.01, entitled Investment Policy and Resolution Adopting the Investment Policy. And Ms. Gregor, Stephanie Gregor, our General Counsel from TDCJ, are you presenting on this particular item?
Yes, sir.
All right, please proceed.
Good morning Chairman, members, and Mr. Lumpkin. This item concerns the annual review and adoption of Board Policy 14.01, titled Investment Policy. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.01 and Texas Government Code Section 2256.005, the board must perform an annual review of this policy. Due to passage of House Bill 34 during the 89th legislative session, the agency proposes adding language to the investment policy stating that TDCJ is not authorized to acquire a security issued by a country of concern identified under the Texas Government Code Chapter 2,270, or an entity owned or controlled by or subject to the jurisdiction of a country of concern.
And is that the, what's in our packet stated as summary revisions? That is the sum and substance of the revision that's being presented?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. With that, any additional questions on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the annual review of Board Policy BP 14.01, Investment Policy as presented, and the chairman sign the resolution adopting the investment policy.
I have a motion on this item from Board Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Ms. Gregor, I understand our next agenda item is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.3, entitled Admissions. Ms. Gregor, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you. The Amendments to Board Rule 152.3 revised Section B to add language including the verification process of a county's request for reimbursement. The amendments also revise and remove sections due to the proposed repeal of Board Rule 152.5, Designation of State Jail Regions. This will be addressed later on in our agenda. And finally, the amendments propose grammatical and formatting updates. These will be published in the Texas Register and available for public comment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions on this agenda item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the publication in the Texas Register of the proposed Amendments to Board Rule 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.3, Admissions, to receive public comment as presented.
Thank you, Judge Francis. I have the motion from you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 159.19, entitled Continuity of Care and Services Program for Offenders Who are Elderly, Terminally Ill, Significantly Ill, or with a physical disability or having a mental illness. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This is a proposed amendment to Board Rule 159.19. The proposed amendments add the Texas Workforce Commission to the Memorandum of Understanding, revise the title and terminology for readability and understanding, and make grammatical updates. The proposed amendments will be published to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions from the board members on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 159.19, Continuity of Care and Services Program for offenders who are elderly, terminally ill, significantly ill, or with a physical disability or having a mental illness to receive public comment as presented.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion on this item from Ambassador Siv. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. Did I get a second from General Welch? I did get a second from General Welch. He's confirmed that. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. The next agenda item is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Adoption of Amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 151.51, entitled Custodial Officer Certification and Hazardous Duty Pay Eligibility Guidelines. Ms. Gregor, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you. These proposed amendments were previously heard by the board. The amendments revise offender to inmate and rule to section throughout. They revise the definition for routine direct inmate contact. Add sociologists and interviewers to employees eligible under Hazardous Duty Code 3. Replace the Deputy Executive Director with the Chief Operations Officer as the authority to approve adding positions to Hazardous Duty Code 3. Add the Chief Operations Officer, Chief Programs Officer, other division directors, and no more than 25 administrative duty officers to employees eligible under Hazardous Duty Code 4. And remove language stating any other positions approved by the Deputy Executive Director. The revisions also add laboratory technicians assigned to parole offices to employees eligible under Hazardous Duty Code 8. And finally, they make grammatical updates. No public comments were received on these revisions.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions from the board on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 151.51, Custodial Officer Certification and Hazardous Duty Pay Eligibility Guidelines as published in the Texas Register and that the chairman sign the order to this effect.
Thank you, Mr. Fordyce. I have a motion from you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordyce. I have a second from Ms. Zeicher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. The next item is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Adoption of Amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.25, entitled Maximum Rated Capacity of Individual Units. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
Thank you. This rule was also previously heard by the board and published in the Texas Register. This is the proposed adoption for the maximum rated capacity of units. These amendments update the maximum rated capacity of individual units within the system. We are also proposing a change to the previously proposed revisions, and that change will include the addition of the recently purchased Dalby unit in post-Texas. And it will establish the Dalby capacity for 1,906 beds. Two public comments were received. Both of those comments expressed concern for the safety of inmates. However, TDCJ is assuring those commenters that we will continue to consider security factors when evaluating classification and housing decisions. And those decisions, of course, will be made on an individualized basis for each inmate. Subject to the board's adoption, this rule will be reposted to the Texas Register to illustrate the new change and addition of the Dalby unit. However, that will not be subject to public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions from the board on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt the amendments to the, to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.25, quote, "maximum rated capacity of individual units," end quote, as published in the Texas Register to include the change establishing the maximum rated capacity of the recently purchased Giles W. Galby unit as 1,906, and that the chairman sign the order to this effect.
I have a motion on this item from General Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from General Welch. I have a second from Board Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Repeal of Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.5, entitled Designation of State Jail Regions. Ms. Gregor, when you're ready, please proceed.
This is the previously discussed repeal for the designation of state jail regions. This repeal is advised pursuant to some legislative changes during the 89th legislative session. In particular, Senate Bill 2405, also known as the Sunset Bill for TDCJ, repealed the governing statutes found in the Texas Government Code Section 507.003 and 507.004 that would necessitate this board rule. So the proposed repeal will be posted in the Texas Register and available for public comment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions or comments on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the Texas Register the proposed repeal of Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.5, Designation of State Jail Regions, to receive public comment as presented.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We're always passing rules, Ms. Gregor. It's nice to see one that actually gets taken out, right?
We have a couple of those.
Okay, good, good. The next agenda item is the Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding Proposed New Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 151.58, entitled Legislative Leave Pool. Ms. Gregor, please continue.
Thank you. And after I just said we're repealing a couple of rules, this one's actually a brand-new addition, so. addition, so, uh, you take one away and you, you get a new one. This item proposes the adoption of a new Board Rule numbered 151.58, entitled Legislative Leave Pool. This proposed rule is also coming out of the 89th Legislative Session in House Bill 1828, which established a legislative leave availability for correctional employees. This particular rule permits correctional employees to voluntarily contribute up to eight hours of compensatory or vacation time to the leave pool, and a correctional employee may in turn use that time that is contributed to the leave pool on behalf of certain associations that represent employment within the TDCJ. The proposed rule will be posted in the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Gregor. So if I understand that the purpose of the rule is to, um, help support, uh, the ability of correctional employees to, uh, contribute to the legislative process.
Yes, sir. This would allow correctional employees to attend committee hearings and, um, perhaps testify on behalf of the, the organization that they are representing.
Great. Any other questions from the, uh, Board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the, in the Texas Register the proposed new Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 151.58, Legislative Leave Pool, to receive public comments as presented.
I have a motion on this item from Ms. Zeicher. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Zeicher. I have a second from Vice Chair Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Board Policy BP 01.01, entitled Texas Board of Criminal Justice Responsibilities. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
The following revisions are proposed. This also is coming mainly out of legislative changes that occurred during the 89th Session. The revisions are as follows. Offender is replaced with inmate, and use of force is replaced with behavioral intervention throughout. The Authority section is updated to include current citations. The Policy section is updated to articulate and include independent reporting entities as recently established in statute. Office titles are updated for independent reporting entities. Language is added to include the Office of the Independent Ombudsman. In Section 2 dot A dot 2, language concerning the annual audit plan, plan is changed from TDCJ to Office of the Independent Auditor. The state jail region requirement is removed due to the statutory repeal discussed earlier. Legislative references and directive titles are updated. Language is added to state that unless otherwise specified, independent reporting entities are expected to abide by TDCJ personnel directives, and formatting is updated and edited for clarity and grammar.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor, and if we, as a Board, we very much appreciate these cleanups to the, to the Board policy that basically tells us what we are doing, what we should be doing. Uh, any other questions, uh, from the, uh, Board, uh, members? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy BP, uh, old 01.01, Texas Board of Criminal Justice Responsibilities as presented.
Thank you. I have a, a motion from, uh, Vice Chair Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Board Policy BP 01.04, entitled Standard of Conduct for the Texas Board of Criminal Justice and the Executive Director of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
The revisions to Board Policy 1 dot 04 update the Authority section to include current citations, update language addressing annual training requirements for the Board as established in Senate Bill 2405, our Sunset Bill, and the revisions update language throughout to reflect current terminology, update the signature authority, and update formatting and editing for clarity, clarity and grammar.
Again, Ms. Gregor, we appreciate as a Board these cleanups to the, uh, Board policy that, that provides the standard of conduct for our Board and the Executive Director. Any other questions or comments from the Board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the provo, proposed revisions to Board Policy BP 01 point 04, Standard of Conduct for the Texas Board of Criminal Justice and the Executive Director of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice as presented.
I have a motion from Board Secretary Dr. Burrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow. I have a second from General Welch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Board Policy BP 13 point 69, entitled State Counsel for Offenders. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This proposed revision renames the office from the State Council for Offenders to the Independent Office of Inmate Counsel throughout. It also updates the mailing address and signature authority, and finally makes formatting and editing edits for clarity and grammar.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor, for us allowing to see us in, in, in print, uh, the culmination of something that a number of us on the Board, all of us on the Board, have been advocating for, for a while with this, uh, name change that more accurately describes, uh, the great work that this, uh, office is doing to represent, uh, uh, indigent members of our, of our incarcerated communities. Uh, with that, any other questions or comments from the Board? Uh, if not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. In support of the new IOIC, I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy BP 13 point 69, State Council for Offenders as presented.
Thank you, Judge Francis, and I know you've, you've worked very hard to achieve this moment as well. Uh, I, I have a motion from Judge Francis. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Personnel Directive, Personnel Directive, PD 94, entitled Teleworking. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
Thank you. The following revisions are proposed to the Teleworking Directive. The directive is revised throughout to incorporate guidelines for reporting entities. The Authority section is updated to include new statutory provisions from the Texas Government Code adopted by House Bill 5196. Definitions are added for approval authority, authorization of telework, and reporting entity, and the definition of telework is modified to track House Bill 5196. The directive is revised to provide flexibility and clarify the right to recall employees to the office at any time. Performance expectations are added for employees. The request and approval process is streamlined to include the addition of a PERS 640 form, which is a telework request, and a renewal process is added, and a mutually agreed-upon telework schedule is required.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. From your perspective, do these revisions, um, bring the agency in line with, uh, the directives of state leadership on the use of, in the appropriate use of, of telework?
Yes, sir. I believe they do.
All right. Any other, uh, questions or comments, uh, from the Board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the proposed revisions to Personnel Directive 94, Teleworking as presented.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv on this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed deletion of Board Policy BP 11 point 75, entitled Telework. Uh, so kind of the flip side of what we just talked about. Uh, you may proceed, Ms. Gregor.
Thank you. As mentioned, on Personnel Directive 94, that directive now addresses telework for the reporting entities to the Board. So the Board Policy 11 dot 75 is no longer necessary since it is kind of being rolled into the previous Personnel Directive. So they will still have the same opportunities, um, and, and policies as before, and as is consistent with PD 94, it's just being consolidated into one policy. Also, Board Policy 1 dot 01, which we discussed earlier at this meeting, now clarifies that the direct reports or the reporting entities to the Board are expected to abide by the same Personnel Directives that TDCJ follows.
So in other words, even though those organizations report directly to this Board, uh, individuals with those organizations are still going to be, uh, abiding by the same newly revised rules of telework as everybody else?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, with that, any other questions or comments?
Just a clarification on that. There is a specific call-out in this policy and in all of our PDs for our direct reports, and that's to stay consistent across all of our policies. So it's not just that there's language that is going to be broadly applicable, it's just that our direct reports are now housed within these PDs, so we don't have to have duplicate policies.
Got it. So basically, we can use these existing policies that we believe are going to be consistent with state, uh, directed, the direction established by state leadership, and, and those same rules of the road will apply.
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, with that, any other, uh, questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the proposed deletion of Board Policy BP 11 dot 75, Telework as presented.
I have a motion on this item from Ms. Zeicher. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Zeicher. I have a second from Vice Chair Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gregor. We, we, we covered a lot right there. Appreciate it. Uh, next, we come to the Chairman's Report. As I said earlier in the Wyndham School District meeting, in my presentation today and in future presentations, I will be spotlighting efforts by the Texas Department of Criminal Justice to innovate and modernize operations and programming, and the efforts by the agency towards continuous improvement and efficiency of those operations and programs. For today, we spotlight an innovative, new staffing and deployment initiative, which has been championed by the Estelle Unit in Huntsville. And, uh, I'm going to be joined today in this presentation by Estelle Unit Senior Warden, Mr. Anthony Newton, who's just come before us at the podium. And, uh, Warden Newton, uh, we obviously recognize that you were recently recognized as Warden of the Year by TDCJ for your leadership at Estelle and your efforts at innovative approaches to staffing and workplace practices at that unit. So we take a pause here and we give you applause. Thank you. Warden Newton, we know that you began your TDCJ career in January of 2002 as a correctional officer at the Hughes Unit, and we know that you advanced steadily through the ranks, eventually overseeing the unit's mental health therapeutic diversion program as a major of correctional officers. You then later served as an assistant warden before taking on the senior warden role at the Ramsey Unit, the Ellis Unit, and then your current post at Estelle in August of 2024. A, you have been a nationally certified psychiatric technician since 2004, and you also hold an associate degree in criminal justice. So, Warden Newton, again, congratulations on your well-deserved recognition, and thanks for joining us here today. And the purpose of, of, of our discussion today is to discuss, what we're going to talk about as being the team-based staffing model that you and your unit leadership team have been implementing at the Estelle Unit. Uh, just as some background, uh, the Estelle Unit is one of TDCJ's most active and complex facilities. It houses all custody levels and offers extensive programming, full-service medical operations, and diverse housing. Because of its complex nature, the Estelle Unit was what management believed to be an ideal choice to test and implement a new-to-TDCJ team-based staffing model. This team-based staffing pilot began as an idea to directly address ongoing staffing challenges across our correctional facilities. Our Board continues to recognize that staffing challenges are here to stay at various places across our state where our units for TDCJ are located, despite great efforts to recruit and retain correctional staff. As a result of those staffing challenges and in the spirit of continuous improvement and efficiency of unit operations, TDCJ, our Board believes can and must adapt to the reality of staffing challenges and continuously evaluate and improve its workplace practice. So this workplace practice approach that Warden Newton and I are spotlighting today is one such form of innovation. The core principle of this approach is influenced by the community policing model, successfully used nationwide by police agencies, probation and parole offices, and even the United States Army in response to similar workforce challenges and in an effort to make their operations as effective and, and as efficient as possible. So to tell you more about this pilot and its implementation, I'm going to turn the mic over to you, Warden Newton.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Lumpkin, and members of the Board. Uh, happy to be here today to highlight the Estelle Unit staffing model, and I'd also like to take the time to thank, uh, some individuals who are the original brain trust behind this, is Mr. Richard Babcock, Mr. Andrew Barbie, and Mr. Tony O'Hair, who assisted me greatly when, when coming up with the initial idea and, and letting me run with it to put it in, uh, get it off the ground.
Yes, sir.
Also want to thank, uh, Mr. Eric Guerrero and CID leadership, as well as executive leadership, for having the trust and faith in the Estelle Unit Administration and our outstanding staff to carry this plan out.
Yes, sir.
So we believe this team-based staffing model is essential to achieving three vital goals: safety, security, and employee retention. The traditional TDCJ staffing model is built on static posts, where staff are assigned to one area and are responsible for all functions within that area for their entire shift. The team-based staffing model challenges that accepted idea by simplifying, if possible, eliminating the static post system. We conducted a full evaluation of, of all unit functions and static duty posts. We determined that we could eliminate the housing rovers and the general population, and instead create highly focused teams to patrol the main building and conducting independent Under the new staffing metric, we've created five different teams to implement a community policing atmosphere throughout the facility. These teams are the escort team, ingress egress team, security check team, inmate management team, and a cell search team. Each team consists of three to five officers who remain together day-to-day. This consistency allows us to train, hold accountable, and build strong working groups to complete daily tasks. This widely successful implementation focuses our staff in the areas they are needed most, moving away from less routine patrol-style coverage in areas that typically have low security incidents. The idea of using teams is greatly assisted by newly designated team leaders or officers in charge. They focus on the motivation, the training, and physical operations of their teams. By streamlining our supervisory approach, we are significantly reducing the administrative and report-based workload for sergeants and lieutenants, allowing our leadership team to dedicate more time to critical operational oversight. Our vision is for these identified team leaders to undergo a leadership course within the Training and Leader Development Division. This course will emphasize leadership skills, effective communication, team building, decision making. This course will emphasize leadership skills, effective communication, team building, decision-making, and employee motivation, providing them with the confidence and presence to effectively lead small teams. Going into the pros of our team staffing model are very significant. We've experienced increased morale and staff retention due to a strong sense of belonging, reduced employee stress from a shared workload, ownership and pride in team assignments, increased personal safety of staff, reduction in complacency and idleness. And beyond the anecdotal benefits, the results have been remarkable. The pilot began in March 2025, when the Estelle Unit was at that time 63% staffed. As of today, we are now at 92% staffed, and our call-in no-show rates have been reduced by nearly 30%.
I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but I want you to repeat those statistics, sir.
Yes, sir. So the pilot began in March 2025, when we were at that time 63% staffed. As of today, we are now at 92% staffed on the facility, with a call-in no-show rate that has been reduced by nearly 30%. So with that...
Yes, 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 yes. For sure.
So with that, I'd like to thank the Office of Strategic Initiatives and Modernization for their support. They have been and will continue to be heavily involved in measuring the pilot's progress and implementation. The OSIAM will also continue to have staff surveys and comprehensive data reviews to determine success. Specifically, they'll compare data on grievances, disciplinaries, injuries, assaults, behavioral intervention incidents, and inmate protection investigations to see how the change in staffing affects the climate and overall environment of the facility.
Thank you, sir, for that overview. I understand you have a video that you'd like to show us as well?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The former staffing model we've used for many years was based on static posts within the facility, which the officers were assigned to individual cell blocks and responded for those every duty on that block. So with the new staffing method, we have five different teams of staff that conduct different functions, going through the hallways, basically implementing a community policing type of atmosphere. So the teams that we've created, there's a security check team, a cell search team, an ingress egress team, an inmate management team, and an escort team. And there are teams of three to five officers on each one that go through all main building throughout the day and conduct those functions. As far as what team they're on, the initial thing they do when they enter the housing areas is a full security check. So I believe that this method, we're actually conducting more security checks than we were previous model, especially the insured staff at that time. With that, it also, you know, the inmates are constantly seeing a security officer in and out of the housing area, which I believe that's what helps enhance the safety and reduces the incidents, because, you know, more staff are watching, seeing what's going on, the lessening is a lie to act out. With the team staffing, the camaraderie by working with four to five officers together on the team, entering cell blocks together, it's helping retention, because they feel safer. They feel safer going in and out of the cell blocks, and I believe it has pushed the morale and saved, pushed the confidence within. From the time we began the pilot in March, our unit was right around 63% staffed. As of today, we are now close to 90% staffed. Calling rates and no-show rates have been reduced now by 25%. It's been proven to be very effective, because it's safer, it's better, you know, so that's a big part of the increase in staffing is camaraderie.
Thank you, Warden Newton, for that presentation, and I know a number of Board members are going to have questions and comments, but before we get to those, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lumpkin to offer his additional thoughts as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman, and Warden Newton. Great job, and as you mentioned, this was a lot of careful analyzing the approach, certainly with Mr. Rich Babcock, as you mentioned, and Mr. Tony O'Haire, and Andy Barbie, and excited also of what we've seen at the Estelle Unit. He mentions the increase in staffing and just the approach overall, and you feel that when you walk the Estelle Unit, as we have several times. On October 1, we also initiated another seven facilities that have started the pilot, so it's only 17 days in. So we'll watch those pilots closely, and that's at the Beto Unit, the Bird Unit, Covefield-McConnell, Wainwright, Clemmons, and Memorial. And those seven wardens spent time at Estelle with Warden Newton, visiting the facility. And actually, two of those facilities, the senior wardens were assistant wardens at the Estelle Unit that helped stand up that model. So we're excited, closely watching. It takes extreme ownership, such as Warden Newton shows, and certainly that's why he was absolutely a top candidate for Warden of the Year. I do want to point out that those in the room that saw the video, you saw our officers body-worn cameras. And for our state leaders in the room, offices, thank you for the funding for that session. Before last, but going forward, we hope to have the rest of the units also funded to do that. But thank you again, Warden Newton. Thank you to you and your team.
Yeah, well-stated there, and again, thank you, Warden Newton, again, for your leadership and commitment to rethinking the ways that we do our business at units and deploy our correctional staff. And as Mr. Lumpkin said, we've had the chance to actually walk the walk and follow those teams as they're doing their work, and it is extremely impressive. And I would encourage, I know a number of other Board members have done the same, so I would encourage each of you to, in the near future, to either at Estelle or one of these other pilot facilities to be able to see that for yourselves. And we also recognize that across the 103 units that TDCJ operates, there may not be, and I know I'm speaking for you too, there may not be a one-size-fits-all approach for the optimal way to deploy staff, but we also recognize a couple of other things. First, those 103 TDCJ units, to some degree, can serve as kind of test sites or laboratories for best working practices, and we can always be looking to support improved ways of deploying and supporting our staff. And we know, Warden Newton, that you and other wardens around the state will be the leaders in this effort to have the, you know, kind of, we have always done it this way approach, to avoid that approach to unit management. Second thing that we recognize is that innovation requires much more than what I'll call a top-down approach. Senior leadership can support these innovative workplace practices, but ideas for what actually work, what actually works at units, can come from those units themselves. I've seen the following quote, and I know that our Board believes in this very much, that the role of a leader is not to come up with all of the great ideas, the role of a leader is to create an environment in which great ideas can happen. And I think this is an example, this team-based approach. No one dictated this from up top. This was an idea that came from the unit level in terms of what actually would work on that unit, and obviously, the returns in this pilot are extremely promising. So we, as a Board, value unit-level leadership, like you have displayed, Warden Newton, and we know that there are many other wardens, senior wardens and assistant wardens and their unit leadership teams around the state, who are also displaying the same type of initiative and new ideas on how to operate units that your Estelle leadership team is showing. And we also know that TDCJ unit leadership teams across the state are committed to sharing ideas and experiences, and this is something, Mr. Lumpkin, you can speak to, you've spoken to already, maybe can speak to more, sharing their experiences with improved workplace practices through continued collaboration between those unit leadership teams. As I said earlier in a meeting, no one among us has a monopoly on good ideas, and the more TDCJ can be experimenting responsibly with new ways of doing things, more efficient and staff-supportive ways of doing things, the better off the TDCJ system in our state will be. So with those comments, I'm sure other Board members have some observations or further questions on this. I see Pastor Sprinkle.
Yes, I had the privilege of being on the Estelle Unit just this past week. I was really impressed with everything that Warden Newton and his staff are doing. I just had, you listed out all the pros of the team-based staffing, and so encouraged, I mean, just the accountability and stuff that comes along with that. I can, from an outside and just initial perspective, must be just hugely beneficial. I wonder with, has there been any experience with or thought into, in those teams as assigned? If you start having some discontent or any kind of trouble within the team, is there any way to deal with that? If that's not been a real concern, that's great. Also, a follow-up question, those teams are specific task-oriented, I understand. Is there movement between teams from time to time, just to give the officers different perspective and tasking?
Yes, yes, sir. So to date, we haven't had any real discontent issues with them. It took, you know, it took a good two or three months for them to actually get the buy-in and understand the method by us being out there physically as an administration, working with them and showing them the way to do it. As far as interjecting with teams, yes, we do. We have several incentivized housing wings in the main building, which we can keep the doors open throughout the morning from 7:00 AM to 10:30, which are normal rack times, and then that simulates a dorm. And so with that process right there, the ingress egress team can direct their attention to other cell blocks and within the housing area and interject and help out as necessary. Another example, if the cell search team has completed their searches for the day, they can also assist another team to carry out the mission.
Very good. Other questions? Mr. Lumpkin, I did want you to speak just briefly on how TDCJ management fosters that collaboration and exchange of information among unit leadership.
No, absolutely, and just one, one thing we live by is division, you know, 16 divisions within Texas Department of Criminal Justice, there's no fences around anybody's backyard, and nobody has all the solutions solved. And certainly, not just internally, but externally, we take that input, and, you know, the collaboration as the folks we mentioned, but also we have other states reaching out to us now. Virginia Department of Corrections has reached out recently, they want to come and see this model, and certainly take the input of what they've seen in different staffing models, because it is an ongoing communication highway back and forth. But also, what I add is Pastor Sprinkle's question to Warden Newton and his, you know, profiling and highlighting the ingress egress, you know, on units such as the size of the Estelle Unit, not speaking for Ms. Hartman and others, but that's big to ensure that we get the men and women on the women's unit to those programs on time, and getting their own time, whether it's a Wyndham program, vocation program, treatment program, and so forth. And certainly, there's a lot of activity at the Estelle Unit and some of these units we mentioned this morning, so we're very excited to see the path forward.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions on this item? I see Vice Chair.
Yes, I had a simple question. Are those teams working around the clock? Are they only working from 8:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 6:00?
Yes, ma'am. They're broke up into 12-hour shifts.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Good job. I love it.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions on this item, thank you again so much, Warden Newton. Congratulations on your accomplishments, and thank you so much for giving us a window into this, into this new staff deployment model.
Yes, sir. Absolutely cannot do it without my staff.
Continuing with the theme of innovation and ideas and how to improve agency operations, the next agenda item is a report on information technology initiatives from TDCJ Information Technology Director Tina Clark. Ms. Clark, I see you approaching the podium. We just spotlighted an effort to innovate staffing deployment at one of TDCJ's units, or a number of units, actually, and we recognize that technology, specifically information technology, will play an essential role in moving TDCJ forward from workplace practices that may have served TDCJ well over the decades, but that need to modernize to employ technology in a manner that is safe and responsible, and that makes TDCJ's workplaces better for TDCJ staff and our incarcerated populations. So, Ms. Clark, we appreciate you being here, and we look forward to hearing about these IT initiatives, and when you're ready, please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Lumpkin, and members. Today, I'm presenting an initial report on select information technology projects for Board Oversight. This will become a recurring presentation with updates and subsequent meetings. As each project is presented, I will provide a description, the funding amount, status, and project completion date. The majority of these projects are capital-funded and include contracts for goods and services. Most of the projects are in the procurement phase, which can be divided into three stages: pre-solicitation, where the statement of work is created and then solicitations are built; solicitation stage, where the request for offer is made public with a deadline for submitting the bids; and the evaluation stage, where the bids are reviewed and a vendor is selected for contract award. So the first project is the Corrections Information Technology System, SIT 2.0. This project is to replace our legacy system supporting offender management. Our current legacy system is over 40 years old with aging COBOL applications. The funding for this project is at 53.38 million and will be used for multiple contracts and is expected to be a four-year initiative. When I say multiple contracts, the first contract is for the product itself, for a modern information offender management system, and is expected to have capabilities for supporting offender management processes from the front gate, which is intake, all the way through parole discharge. This solicitation was published on October 1st with bids due on November 13th. Other contracts also will be, we will solicit for other contract services, which include program and project management services, organizational change management services, and independent verification and validation services. The next project is the Centralized Accounting and Payroll Personnel System, which we refer to as CAPS. CAPS is the Enterprise Resource Planning Solution for the State of Texas. The Comptroller holds this contract with the vendor for CAPS and is responsible for hosting and maintaining that system. This project is for the configuration and migration of the HR payroll components of CAPS to the HR payroll component of CAPS. TDCJ is one of the last state agencies to migrate to CAPS. Once we migrate to CAPS, agency employees will be empowered to take control of their HR information with quick access and visibility to employee information such as time balances, and will be enabled to make basic changes to their HR profile, such as direct deposit information and W-4 information. Employees will also be responsible for entering their own time. The funding we received is 19.5 million for the support of this migration process. Transitioning to CAPS will require email addresses to be issued to all state employees or agency employees, and the addition of PCs to be installed on correctional facilities. It also includes software for gaps discovered between legacy systems and the CAPS system. We are in the, the CAPS is in execution, it's used by many state agencies already. We are in the early portion of execution for our piece of it, which is still in the project planning phase. We're estimated at about 18 to 20% complete, and our goal for that HR first component is July 13th of 2026. Number three is the inmate banking. This project is for a turnkey solution replacing our trust fund banking system, the parole fee and restitution processes, the point-of-sale system used in the commissary, and the management of commissary warehouse inventory. It is designed to improve the efficiency and handling of inmate funds, remove the necessity for issuing paper checks to inmates upon their release, and incorporates an online payment process for service, online payment process to service the payment of parole fees and restitution. This project is in the execution phase and is funded for 8.1 million, and the expected completion date is August of 2026. Number four is for broadband connectivity. This project is to lay a fiber backbone within our correctional facilities to create a network infrastructure needed to support technology initiatives. to create a network infrastructure needed to support technology initiatives. The project is currently in the pre-solicitation phase of procurement and is funded at twenty-nine point three million. The project is expected to be complete by the end of FY twenty-seven. Number five is the OIG Crime Management System. It is a project for the, the purchase and implementation of a modern crime management system and will replace the legacy system currently in use by the Office of the Inspector General. This modern platform is expected to have capability for data sharing with other agencies and supports case tracking, digital evidence, mobile access and reporting and advanced analytics. The project is in the pre-solicitation phase of procurement and is funded for one million dollars. The project is expected to be completed by the end of FY twenty-seven. Number six is a project for the purchase and implementation of a modern learning management system for the employees and is sponsored by the Training and Leader Development Division. The LMS is expected to include capabilities for course catalog, self and auto enrollment options, managing training resources, tracking attendance, scores and performance. It also comes with integration for interactive content, scheduling and waitlist options. The project is currently in the pre-solicitation phase of procurement and is funded at four point one million with an expected completion date by the end of FY twenty-seven. Number seven is a video surveillance analog conversion. This project replaces seventy-one unit-based analog video surveillance systems with more than forty-seven hundred cameras. We're replacing them with modern digital video systems. Modernizing the video systems will improve video quality and replace aging systems that are no longer in support. This project is in the pre-solicif- pre-solicitation phase as well and is funded for twenty-nine point one million. And the last one, number eight, is for the Technology Enhanced Inmate Count Proof of Concept. This initiative started as a proof of concept and to enhance the inmate count process using technology to achieve operational efficiencies. ID scanners were tested to capture data of inmates entering and leaving non-housing areas, such as medical and education, and proved useful in producing automated rosters for the outcount areas. The data is accessed via tablets used by officers responsible for completing the inmate count. Time savings and accuracy were proven using the technology in the outcount areas. A business case is now being developed, including product and infrastructure alternatives and costs to implement throughout the, throughout the unit. And on this one, the status is basically we're developing a business case and with no project completion date at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And, and is it your intent to come back to this board in December and provide some additional information on the business case associated with item number eight, which is the inmate count proof of concept?
Yes, sir.
And, and just also just mention to the board members, if, if you would like, it would be a great opportunity for you all, if you have a chance between now and the December board meeting, to actually go to Estelle, see the, the good work that's being done on this proof of concept. I would definitely encourage you to do that. That will give you some, some much better context when you hear about the actual business case associated with this proof of concept. And then my only other question is with respect to the broadband connectivity and laying, I, I love the language, laying a fiber backbone, that's, that's, that's the right language, because we've always talked about that, that access to wireless in our facilities is going to be part of the backbone of, of more efficient operations. So can you just give the board a little bit of flavor on terms of how you're developing that, how, how you anticipate through this pre-solicitation, that backbone will actually be implemented? And then also the, what that means in terms of being able to develop wireless access points and, and other ways of utilizing that broadband connectivity to help support TDCJ programs?
Okay. So first off, the, there are about twenty-three units with the video surveillance, like the comprehensive systems and the body worn cameras and other technology initiatives that we already have that fiber backbone in place. And for the last few years, we have really focused on bringing, getting the fiber to the gate, I guess, to the front gate or to the property, increase that capacity, that network capacity there. So we went from using like T1 telephone lines to maybe just twenty megabits, you know, on up to a gig or something. But we, that was only one stage. We had to get fiber to all the buildings. So then you can have individual cable drops to either PCs or to wireless access points where we can then expand to other devices. And as the demand for technology grows and as we've been testing out at the Estelle unit, having the cable, the fiber there obviously provides us the backbone then to service and provide things of video nature, more demanding use of that connectivity and then positions us for having wireless access points where then maybe, like UTMB recently was talking about, needing to take their technology carts maybe to cell side to do a health check. Well, modern medical equipment like that depends on wireless access points. Right now, we only have wireless access points for inmate technology using the tablets. There's been a great desire to utilize tablets for our officers to do some of their check and reduce paper. And that push has been great since we deployed the tablets in twenty-one for inmates. We haven't done that for officers, but it is because we need that fiber to every building. In education, there is a great need for improved technology, other devices such as tablets for Wyndham to use in their teaching and educational programs. And so this fiber will go to every building and then we will slowly deploy the endpoints as needed.
And will the board, when they hear about the more detail on the business case for the inmate count pilot, will they have the opportunity to see one way in which having these wireless access points, having that fiber backbone, the broadband fiber backbone allows this type of process improvement to, to work?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, general?
Yes, sir. I had a great chance to spend some time and, and very candid and, and extensive discussion with Ms. Clark about the information technology initiatives that we're undertaking. And, and I'll just tell you this, they're massive. And I've had an experience in my careers where we've taken on massive technology initiatives and sometimes very successfully, other times unsuccessfully. And I think the difference, in fact, I know the difference between the success and the failure is the direct oversight and the advocacy for each of these initiatives. Lacking that, you can really have some large dollar failures. And, and believe me, I've seen very, much larger than what we're talking about and it's, it's unacceptable. I think, I think it's important for this board to understand the challenges that Ms. Clark has moving forward. And I have a great concern that she's not properly staffed to, to handle it. And, and I'd like to, I, I think it's wonderful that we're having you being able to present to us every time. But I think as a board, we need to really consider, and maybe, Mr. Lumpkin, if you could look into this or, or, is there, is there something we can do, even if it's additional duty, for someone to assist in their initiatives so that there is a direct oversight and somebody responsible to see that these things continue to move forward? Because we want all of these things to be successful.
Yes, sir.
And you've got some great companies you're working with, Gartner, great companies that are, that are going to be assisting on some of the really big numbers, big things. But I, I wanted to express today the importance of supporting your efforts however we can.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, if I may, that agency leadership did have conversation with me just a few months ago about the CAPS initiative. It's very aggressive, it's very tight scheduled for the massive change that the agency will go through. And one of the things that came out of that was adding Michael Bates as the Chief Projects Officer to. One of the things I said is, this project starts off with business and finance, HR and ITD. Of course, and it spreads out CID is massive, but, but it's the entire agency. And I said, okay, we need somebody that's kind of neutral in, in those areas, that knows agency operations and that can help push this along and provide that oversight and keep the communication between what all we're doing on the ground and leadership. And, and that has already been very effective.
And by the way, you can't overemphasize the importance of coordination of that nature. Somebody needs to understand how this is going to work and, and really have a true understanding of it and, and be able to implement it. So wonderful.
Yes, and it allows us each to focus on our areas, so.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Clark. And to your point, general, we were able to add some positions in IT and she's in the midst of fielding them right now. Certainly would take more if, if appropriate and will certainly, as we build the next request, take that in heavy consideration with a number of projects. And Ms. Clark mentioned Michael Bates. He, he's now our Chief Project Officer. Michael stood up our Fusion Center several years, a couple of years ago, worked with Mrs. Moore and her team as a Deputy Director in Rehabilitation, Reintegration. And, and Mr. Bates has come in, working closely with Ms. Babcock, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Babcock from HR, Ms. Gonzalez from Business Finance and Ms. Clark with ITD. And then, of course, also build up strong paths of communication with the Comp Controller's Office and other state agencies that have stood up CAPS. So Mike, as a Special Projects Officer, will, will take on CAPS, but at some point will also take on SITS 2.0, the first project that, that Ms. Clark mentioned earlier. But no, good points made, general, and we're keeping close watch and, of course, where we can add resources as, as allowed.
Very good discussion. Any other comments or thoughts at this point? We look forward to the presentation in, in December and, and as the general said, the continued update on where we are in these very, very important programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next item on the agenda will be a report from our TDCJ Executive Director. Mr. Lumpkin, I understand you have two topics for us today. If you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Chairman Nichols, members, as mentioned earlier, certainly, first item I want to talk about is transition into the Executive Director position. And today marks forty-seven days, not that I'm counting. But, but, but first off, just, is absolutely honored and humbled to provide a first report. And, and of course, I mentioned earlier that there's the sacred privilege of, of working alongside the thirty-two thousand dedicated men and women who serve this agency. And some of the topics we talked about today, to assist those incarcerated and under supervision, to assist those in, of course, transforming their lives and to support victims of crime, as Ms. Iker also expounded on domestic violence this month, but also to safeguard the people of Texas. And I want to take a moment again just to thank you for the support and trusting me to guide the agency. You know, it began thirty-five years ago and, and as I mentioned, in August when selected. Much has been done in the agency, but, but there's no finish line. And, and some of us have had these conversations in our one-on-ones, that there's no finish line in corrections and leadership. And, and there's still much work to be done. You know, goes almost out saying, but absolutely pledge a lead with integrity to honor the values of the agency to ensure we continue moving forward, certainly strengthening public safety, expanding rehabilitation and reentry and positioning the agency as an international model of criminal justice excellence. My priority is establishing a unified vision built on a commitment to treating every person in our prisons and under supervision with dignity, fairness and respect. This means that you will see even more visible engaged leadership, both in the field, on the units, in our offices and our parole offices and across all of our administrative and operational functions. We will be there to see, to learn and most importantly, to listen. A new culture of visible hands-on leadership is my promise to you. Along with the work each of us is accomplishment, accomplishing as an agency, we are making significant investments to evolve our processes to propel ourselves into the future, just as we heard some a few minutes ago. Initiatives such as upgrading our equipment, modernizing our count processes, launching key technological upgrades like SITS, the Corrections Information Technology System, the Centralized Accounting and Payroll Personnel System and the new learning management system. These investments are paired with a focus on staff wellness and training, ensuring robust employee support and intentional leadership readiness programs to develop the next generation of TDCJ leaders. Our, our operational focus extends directly to inmate and client management. This includes implementing recommendations from the Moss Group, Ms. Moore mentioned earlier, to improve female services that Jill Kell will be taking on. Prioritizing air-conditioned bed expansion and enhancing efficiency by expanding onsite medical services and strengthening efforts to prevent contraband. We also continue expanding subsubuse programs tailored to address the realities of today's addiction, supporting family renitification and building strong pathways to employment to connect men and women with meaningful job opportunities before and after release. We also recognize that TDCJ operates within a larger justice ecosystem. We are driven by our duty to, to the state of Texas and the Texans we serve. We'll ensure full compliance and long-term improvements in implementing sunset recommendations. Finally, the success of this agency and the safety of our state cannot be achieved in isolation. It requires us to build strong enduring partnerships with state leaders, county officials, community leaders, faith-based organizations, mental health professionals and the families of those under our supervision. I'm honored to serve as your Executive Director and have no doubt that together as an agency, we will deliver real lasting change for our great state of Texas. Second item I'd like to report out, you heard a little bit earlier from Chaplain Holmes and, and just wanted to expound a little bit and just pleased to, to again introduce the first ever agency-wide staff, staff chaplain, Billy Holmes. This role provides a comprehensive pastoral care and support to the agency's dedicated employees as part of the agency's 2030 plan. Chaplain Holmes has been faithfully, faithfully serving in this position since June one. And I just want to stop and mention that, that all of our chaplains on, on our units and our parole offices across the state, they've always served collateral duty and certainly assisted our staff. But, but again, July one, to have a dedicated chaplain to this is very meaningful to our staff. Chaplain Holmes brings a wealth of experience, deep commitment to service. As mentioned earlier, forty-year career in public service. Extensive background within the agency makes him uniquely suited for this groundbreaking role. You heard earlier, he started in nineteen eighty-five, spent some time at the Ferguson Unit, the Huntsville Unit, and in two thousand fourteen became the chaplain serving at the Estelle Unit before two thousand fifteen, going to the Goree Unit where he's served for the last ten years. In his new capacity as the Chaplaincy and Volunteer Services Division Staff Chaplain, Chaplain Holmes has expanded his ministry to serve the broader agency staff and their families. His duties encompass a wide range of services, including providing pastoral support and guidance to staff members, officiating weddings for employees, conducting funeral and memorial service for staff and their families, offering vital resources and support during times of crisis, such as hurricanes, severe weather, events, displacement and fire, developing and leading religious work, workshops and educational programs for employees and their families and delivering spiritual support to employees and their families navigating medical challenges. I'd like to share just a somewhat of a personal story, but Chaplain Holmes reached out, actually on August nineteenth of our last board meeting, as I was leaving Austin and, and reached out to me and we made arrangements actually on September first, on first day in the position officially. I met Chaplain Holmes in a local church in Huntsville where he took the time. He prayed over me, offering spiritual encouragement for my new role and certainly was a deeply meaningful moment. I've known Chaplain Holmes for, since the mid nineteen nineties and it certainly captures his spiritual care for all of our staff, not just myself, but all thirty-two thousand plus. And Chaplain Holmes, I think you're still in the room, I hope you are. There you are, right there. Just thank you. Your role is so pivotal to, in supporting our staff's wellness and, and it is a significant step forward also for the agency as we implement 2030 plan when it comes to. to staff wellness overall. And certainly, there's others involved in the room that's part of that. We all are. But I thank you to Chaplain Holmes.
Can we give him another one? All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Lumpkin, any questions or comments from the board on that? If not, our next item on the agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Facilities Division Construction Projects Request to Replace Multiple Roofs, Hughes Unit, Gatesville, Texas. Our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Ron Hudson, will be presenting today, although I think as part of your transition to this new role, are you hoping to give up these reports and talks about ongoing projects?
Well, this is kind of bittersweet today because I really enjoyed doing this and bragging on what all we do in the Facilities Division. And I promise you, whoever takes this role on is going to have the opportunity to do a lot more bragging and a lot more projects that we got coming before the board. So it's a busy time in the Facilities Division, so.
Good. I like that attitude, too. So we expect whoever takes over the Facilities Division is, your expectation is they're going to be able to do an even better job than Ron Hudson did?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So on this first, on this first project, please, please proceed.
Okay. Before I present the two new projects, I would like to provide an update on the status of board-approved projects that we currently have. So, and there's forty-one of those. So there's a lot of them that's going on right now, and there's probably more than there's ever been. But item number one is a Michael unit replace roof. This project is currently eighty-eight percent. Contractor is continuing to work on Building Seven. Item two is a string filler unit replace roofs multiple locations. This project is ninety-nine percent. Vendor is currently working on punch list items to complete deconstruction. Item three is a Huntsville unit repair replace roof mechanical department. This project is five percent. Contractor has mobilized and construction has begun. Item number four is the Holiday Unit Construct New Training Facility. This project is forty-four percent. Work on Building A, which is the training building itself, is ongoing. Concrete pouring for parking lot has begun. Framework for the staff barracks is currently being erected. Item number five is the Ferguson Unit Construct Water Treatment Plant. This project is twenty-eight percent. Duck bank has been installed. Freshwater line has been connected between the ground storage tanks and the high-pressure pump station. Item number six is the Tarrell Unit Refurbish Water Tower Water Treatment Plant. This project is complete. The board-approved program cost of this project was one million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, and the estimated closeout cost is one million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred eighty dollars, or nine percent under program cost. Item number seven is the Connolly Unit Replace Plumbing and Controls Three, Four, Seven, Ten, and Eleven Buildings. This project is twenty-two percent. Seven Building G Pod is complete. Contractor continues to work on Seven Building H and I Pod is ongoing. Item number eight is the Connolly Unit Replace Plumbing and Controls Eight, Twelve, Eighteen, and Nineteen Buildings. This project is four percent. The contractor will begin work on these buildings once work is completed on Seven Building. Item number nine is the LS Unit Install Fire Alarm. This project is thirty-five percent. Material and equipments have been moved inside the main building and installation is currently ongoing. Item number ten is the Ferguson Unit Install Fire Alarm System. This project is fifty-four percent. Installation in the main building is ongoing. Item number eleven is the Vito Unit Renovate Ice House. This project is twenty percent. New ice machine equipment has started to arrive and asbestos abatement has begun. Item number twelve is the Wayne Wright Unit Replace Ag Building Number Five. This project is complete. The board-approved program cost of this project was three million, eight hundred and six thousand dollars, and the estimated closeout cost is three million, one hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars, or eighteen percent under program cost. Item thirteen is the Hobby Unit Construct Multi-Use Facility. The notice to proceed was, has been issued. Item number fourteen is the Vito Unit Design Only Install HVAC in A, B, C, and D wings. The design only project is complete. Item fifteen is McConnell Unit Design Only Project Install HVAC in Inmate Housing. This design only project is fifty percent complete. Item sixteen is the Goodman Unit Install HVAC. This project is forty percent. HVAC equipment has arrived. Duck work, concrete pads, and outside electrical work is ongoing. Item seventeen is a Michael Unit Install HVAC Efficiency Upgrade to Twelve Building. This project is ninety-two percent. All equipment is installed. Contractor is working on punch list items. Also, contractor is conducting testing and balancing of the HVAC system. Item eighteen is the Stiles Unit HVAC Efficiency Upgrade Twelve Building. This project is one percent. Contractor has mobilized and HVAC equipment is on order. Items number nineteen, twenty, twenty-two through twenty-eight is install HVAC inmate housing at Boyd, Gurney, Jester Three, Luther, Polanski, Pallett, Stevenson, Stiles, and Tarrell Units. The notice to proceeds have all been issued on all these projects. The contractors will now begin mobilizing and ordering their equipment. Item twenty-one is the High Tower, and I'm going to go back to number twenty-one. Item number twenty-one is the High Tower Unit Install HVAC inmate housing. The notice to proceed is still pending on that one. The contractor was still working on getting his body and insurance. Once that has arrived, then the notice to proceed will be issued. Again, he will mobilize and order equipment at that time. Items twenty-nine through forty-one is the Construction Expansion Dorms at the Bell, Choice, Moore, Estes, Hamilton, High Tower, Jester Three, Lopez, Luther, Memorial, Monford, Pack, Sanchez, and Travis Units. The notice of awards are still pending on all of these expansion dorms. This concludes my project status updates. I will stand by for any questions you may have.
Well, we appreciate the update. Maybe it's your last one and given your new role, but we really appreciate it. And just for the purposes of the audience, all of these HVAC programs that your projects here you're talking about, will all of these HVAC projects be implemented in time for when the heat kicks in next year?
That's a good question. Some of these will. So as we bring on a housing area on that unit, we'll bring that building online. So not all of them will be done, but we will have the majority of these will be brought online hopefully by next summer. So that's all going to hinge on, again, as you heard me talk about the Goodman Unit a while ago, as y'all know, I brought that project to the board last December.
Right.
The vendor ordered that equipment January, February. That equipment just arrived in August. So there's a seven or eighth month delay, sometimes in equipment getting here. So the majority of these is going to depend on when that equipment can get ordered and arrive. So, but as far as some of the low-lying fruit on some of these units, we've asked them to go ahead and order some of those buildings that would require some of those lower tonnage units that could come in quicker, so we could at least get those buildings online quicker.
Okay.
So yes, there is a plan on getting those done in an expeditiously manner.
No, we appreciate, and we very much appreciate that. Before we get back to the roofs at Hughes, any other questions or comments on the overall report on the TBCJ approved projects?
Just real quick, Mr. Hudson, tell us about the ongoing projects at the Connolly Unit. We've got some pretty extensive plumbing work going on there, and I'm wondering if we are doing these, are we doing these at the same time simultaneously? Are we completing one and then going to the next? How's that work?
That's another great question. There at the Connolly Unit, the Seven Building had been idle probably for five years plus, so there was a lot of issues that we had to work through on the plumbing. So that's all coming to a close. So what we're going to do there at Connolly at Seven Building, once we have that building completely done, then that will give us the ability to start moving inmates from other parts of the unit into Seven Building, so we can start. So that's about to begin, I would say, probably within the next two to three weeks. We will start moving inmates over to Seven Building, and that will give us the flexibility to start moving forward with both of these projects simultaneously at the same time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Great question.
Yes, very good question. Any other questions from the board? If not, let's get back to the action item on the agenda, which is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Facilities Division Construction Projects Request to Replace Multiple Roofs, Hughes Unit, Gatesville, Texas. So, Mr. Hudson, if you would present on that particular item.
Okay, I'll be bringing two projects for your consideration and approval today. The first project is to replace roofs at the Hughes Unit. The work will consist of removal of the existing roofing system, installation of new insulation, polyvinyl chloride membrane roofing systems, overflow pipes, flashings, and replacement of existing heating, ventilation, and air-conditioning equipment. The new roofing system will provide a safer environment and meet building codes as well as energy efficiency requirements. Nine proposals were received for this project in April of two thousand twenty-five. If approved, the work will be performed by kind of hard to pronounce this, but Patuxent Roofing and Contracting LLC, better known as Cram Roofing, so they have a new name, so. It's kind of hard. So anyway.
That's P-A-T, for the record, it's P-A-T-U-X-E-N-T, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Patuxent.
Yes, Patuxent. Patuxent Roofing and Contracting, better known as Cram Roofing. Construction duration is six hundred days. This design was done by Amtech Solutions, Inc. This is the eighteenth project for Cram Roofing. The square footage of this project is two hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventeen square feet. There is a two-year applicator warranty and a twenty-year manufacturing warranty on material. The actual bid for this project was fourteen million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. The total estimated program cost of this project is twenty million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. I pause for any questions on this project.
Any questions from the board on this particular project that's being presented today?
Which building numbers? Okay, at the Hughes Unit, that will be Three, Four, Seven, and Eight, which are inmate housing. Building One, which is the admin area. Building Six, which is all the food service and laundry area, and then also Building Seventeen, which is the TCI Garment Factory. So, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
All right. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Okay.
Yes, Chairman, I have a motion. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request to replace multiple roofs, Hughes Unit, Gatesville, Texas, as presented.
All right, I have a motion from General Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from General Welch. I have a second from Board Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, you mentioned you had two items. So the next item, Mr. Hudson, is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Facilities Division Construction Projects Request to Renovate Water Tower, Ramsey Unit, Rosheren, Texas. So if you would proceed on that one, sir.
All right, the next project for consideration is to renovate water tower at the Ramsey Unit. The work comprises of complete rehabilitation to include sandblasting and recoding of the interior and exterior of the existing tank, necessary repairs on corroded components, as well as electrical improvements. The elevated storage tank will be isolated from the system during construction with no impact to ongoing operations. Completion of this project will ensure the necessary water supply for the unit is sustained. Four proposals were received for this project in August of two thousand twenty-five. If approved, the work will be performed by BRZ Coating, Inc. The construction duration of this project is two hundred seventy days. The design was done by RPC Infrastructure, Inc. This is the second project for BRZ Coating, Inc. There is a one-year standard contractor warranty. The actual bid for this project was seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The total estimated program cost of this project is one million, two hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any additional questions or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request to renovate water tower, Ramsey Unit, Rosheren, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordyce. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordyce. I have a second from General Welch. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for fourteen point nine-nine acres land acquisition, Bird Unit, Huntsville, Texas. TDCJ Manufacturing, Agro Business and Logistics Division Director, Mr. Bill Lewis, will be presenting. Mr. Lewis, you're up there. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Lumpkin, board members. I'll be presenting five land transactions today. Will be recommended approval of these items at today's board meeting. The first agenda item pertains to Senate Bill eighteen seventy-nine, as passed by the eighty-ninth Texas Legislature. Texas Board of Criminal Justice shall transfer a certain fourteen point nine acres of land located at the Bird Unit to Walker County. Walker County shall use this property for the purpose of a criminal justice center. The county does not use this property for this purpose within a ten-year timeframe. Where the tenth anniversary of the date of transfer, the property will automatically revert to the Texas Board of Criminal Justice. The resolution indicates that all water, oil, and gas, other minerals are reserved from conveyance.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for a fourteen point nine-nine acres land acquisition, Bird Unit, Huntsville, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion on this item from Pastor Sprinkle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. I have a second from Ms. Iker. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for electrical transmission easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas. Please proceed, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir. These next four transactions all relate to an inter-agency cooperation agreement with the Human, Health and Human Services Commission at the Monford Unit. Fifteen acres were agreed in that cooperation contract to allow them to purchase, I mean, to build a fifty-man psychiatric center, maximum security on our property. So the first one is Lubbock Power and Light requesting easement for an electrical transformer at the Monford Unit. The easement includes an area of approximately zero point one-six, one-five acres of land, or seven thousand thirty-four square feet long by ten feet wide, for the construction, installation, and operation of an above and below-ground transformer electrical utility site. Electrical easement is pursuant to Page Three, Paragraph Thirteen of the Inter-Agency Cooperation Contract between the Texas Department of Criminal Justice and the Health and Human Services Commission. It will allow the construction of the new psychiatric hospital. There is no offer of compensation, and the term is ninety-nine years.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and appreciate the support of your division in helping to ensure that this much-needed facility is able to operate as intended. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for electrical transmission easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for gas pipeline easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas. I think we all have an idea of where we're going on this, Mr. Lewis, but please proceed.
Yes, sir. Atmos Energy Corporation requests an easement for one four-inch pipeline at the Monford Unit. The easement includes an area of approximately zero point six acres of land, or twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-two square feet long by twenty feet wide to transport natural gas. This utility easement is pursuing also to Page Three, Paragraph Thirteen of the Inter-Agency Cooperation Contract between TDCJ and the Health and Human Services Commission. That will allow the construction also of the new psychiatric hospital. There is no offer of compensation, and the term also is ninety-nine years.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for gas pipeline easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Board Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow. I have a second from Pastor Sprinkle. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for waterline easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas. I think we also know where this one's going, Mr. Lewis, but please continue.
City of Lubbock requests an easement for one ten-inch water line at the Monford Unit. Easement includes an area of approximately zero point five, three-six-five acres of land, or twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine square feet long by fifteen feet wide for the distribution of potable water. This waterline easement is pursuing, again, Page Three, Paragraph Thirteen of the Inter-Agency Cooperation Contract between TDCJ and the Health and Human Services Commission. That will allow the construction of the new hospital. There is no offer of compensation. This term is also ninety-nine years.
Any additional comments or questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
I move the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for waterline easement, Monford, Texas, Monford Unit.
Monford, Texas, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas, excuse me, as presented.
I have a motion on this item from Judge Francis. Do I have a second? I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. If the water comes in, it's gotta come out, so the next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction. Request for wastewater line easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas. Uh, Mr. Lewis, please proceed.
The Health and Human Services Commission requesting easement for a wastewater drainage site at the Monford Unit. Easement includes an area of approximately zero point nine-six-oh-six acres of land, or forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-three square feet long by fifteen feet wide. The water line easement is also pursuant to Page Three, Paragraph Thirteen of the Inter-Agency Cooperation Contract between T D C J and the Health and Human Services Commission. Uh, there is no offer of compensation, and the term is ninety-nine years.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for wastewater line easement, Monford Unit, Lubbock, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv on this item. Do I have a second? I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. I think I have a second from Judge Francis, is that correct? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, at this point, members of the board, we are working ahead of schedule. It is eleven fifty-eight, and I would propose that we take a, a ten-minute, uh, health break, if that's all right. So we'll be back, be back on the record at twelve-ten. Thank you. All right, how about that? Oh, that's fantastic.
And what I do here.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tom, are you getting a present?
You what?
Are you getting a present? I see a present back there.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate y'all, uh, y'all's willingness to host again.
Oh, yes. I'd like to do it there.
I know you have to be involved in this.
We've got a, uh, it's only the second, it's a Sunday. It's right after our gala, we have the wooders. We got a hundred and fifty people cooking steak for us there.
Yeah.
That's a lot of steak.
It is a lot of steak, so hopefully, hopefully you're gonna get all of the, well, if you need any, if you need any, uh, venison product, uh, I've got some, uh, I've got a, you know, a, you know, opening is, is week from tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm gonna clear out my, I'm gonna be in the process of clearing out my stock from last, uh.
Well, we may want to cook some venison.
I may bring some venison sausage.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If that works, I'll, uh, I'll just defrost some, and then I'll just bring it up, uh, for the, for the event.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good. But I've been wanting to get, that's where you're seeing how you trip, man.
Oh, my gosh, words can't describe, uh, that trip. I mean, I just, I was just completely blown away. And I can show you some pictures at some point if you want, and spend a little time looking at pictures of where it's like. You just can't, unless you're out there. And everybody? We gotta wait for our board members. The two-hundred-and-forty-third meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is now back in session. I do want to just note for the record that, uh, Vice Chair Faith Johnson has, uh, has, uh, left the meeting for a very, very good reason. Uh, Judge Johnson is being, uh, awarded a very prestigious honor by the Thurgood Marshall School of Law at Texas Southern University in Houston, uh, this evening, so, uh, and we look forward to hearing more about, uh, about, uh, her experience and, and that award. Uh, the next agenda item is a report on the Office of Inspector General, from our Inspector General, Mr. Lance Coleman. Mr. Coleman, if you're ready, please proceed.
With what we've been doing, showing y'all some of the work that the men and women are doing along with T D C J staff. Uh, the first case, um, that we're gonna talk about is for the McConnell Unit, where there was a contraband drop that was to be made. Now, a lot of times, we get this information about a drop. Well, they do, and I say they, the targets or the people moving narcotics do what we call heat runs, so we get a lot of false alarms, and sometimes they don't happen, they never happen, or they happen when we least expect it. But on this case, we had information, uh, from alert T D C J staff of a possible contraband drop, uh, coming from Corpus Christi, Texas. So, we don't always just get them at the highway gate. Um, a lot of times, we have to follow them. So this one, we did a surveillance that started in Corpus Christi, Texas, with what we'll call a target, with our suspect that is moving the contraband to come up to, um, be dropped, um, at the McConnell Unit. Uh, we worked with our federal and, uh, or not federal, state and local partners on this case. We had Beeville Sheriff's Office, or Bee, Bee County Sheriff's Office, Beeville P D, Texas D P S, and we followed this individual from Corpus Christi into Beeville, where a traffic stop was made by the Beeville Police Department, a probable cause traffic stop. Um, the driver did not consent to search, and we know there may be some contraband in there. We have some reasonable suspicion there. So, local canine, um, drug detection dog came and did a free air sniff, alerted, giving us the probable cause to enter the vehicle, and inside, lo and behold, in this monster can, is four crystalline, um, balls of what tested out to be methamphetamine. And that's what it weighed, at thirty-five ounces. So the street value of that, uh, is about eight hundred and fifty dollars. T D C J prison value, around forty-five hundred dollars. So that was a good arrest, and, um, that one worked out. Next case is one, like I said, we get a lot of, uh, heat runs. We had information that was developed within, uh, the Fusion Center of another drop at the Wind Unit. Uh, we set up on that, and it never materialized, but then we quickly got information of another potential drop. Uh, we started surveillance at the Wind Unit and noticed a vehicle suspicious at night come in, parking near the Wind Unit. We made contact with the driver of that vehicle, and, um, we end up locating, go ahead, contraband wrapped up in that, it's in the glove box there in the top, at the top, which resulted in, uh, about seven hundred and two grams of loose leaf tobacco, which is on the left. And then, even more importantly, that loose leaf tobacco is worth, uh, about thirty-five hundred dollars in our prison. Um, but the three hundred twenty-nine point six grams of paper soaked with K-two is extremely valuable. Um, that's, somebody would make roughly fifty thousand dollars on that, so that is a big capture for us to keep that out of our, our facilities and make, make our. So that is a big capture for us to keep that out of our facilities and make our prison facilities safer. And like I said, we couldn't do this by ourselves. That's Fusion Center, that's Mr. Lumpkin's CID, Mr. Guerrero, LE. I mean, they all do a great job of supporting us, and we're working very well together. So we're happy about that. And like these two cases are still under investigation, so you're not seeing any pictures of anybody or no names. But we're gonna see if they're working with anybody and see if we can arrest some other additional accomplices. Any questions on those two cases?
No, just great work.
Good. We're trying. We have one more slide. The Correctional Law Enforcement Committee about four or five months ago came up with the idea that maybe we should warn these people that are coming onto our property and give them something to look at that, once they pass that point of no return, that they're committing a felony. And so I would like to tell you, now we're working on the rest of them, but this was at the Ellis Unit. It was installed about a week ago. So special thanks to the committee for helping us get that going. Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Lewis for getting that, and Mr. Lewis's print shop printing them. So that's the first at the Ellis, and then the rest of them are being installed at the other units as we speak. So thank y'all very much, Mr. Lumpkin, for letting us get that up there. And they now know that they've been warned before they cross the threshold there.
And thanks to our... It sounds like our board committee was also involved in that process as well.
Extremely instrumental. I am so appreciative to the four members for helping on that.
Yes.
And that really helped us expedite it, and it's up, they're going up, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Progress.
Thank you, members of our board committee as well. Any additional questions or comments for...
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I wanna congratulate... Lance, all these doing to the staff and doing with TDCJ, not only in the contraband, but having a collaborative effort with the correctional staff as well. Because I've been on several deals, and they work very closely together. It hadn't always been that way, and I think it's very important that OYG and correctional staff work together. Thank you so much, Lance, and your team.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for your comment. Any other thoughts or comments? If not, Mr. Coleman, you and your staff, the troops, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is a report from the Office of the Independent Ombudsman. Independent Ombudsman Director, Mr. Brian Patrick, will be presenting. Mr. Patrick, if you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Chairman Nichols, Vice Chair Johnson, who is not here, apologize. Board members, Mr. Lumpkin, good afternoon. Please, please, please deliver that message. I should probably look before I speak, instead of speaking before I look. So the Independent Ombudsman this month would like to present to you an overview of a presentation that we had within the office for Ombudsman Day. The actual mission statement for the Ombudsman Office is stated there. You know, we are responsible for accepting and investigating noncriminal, non-healthcare-related complaints within the TDCJ. And with the Ombudsman Day, which occurred on October 9th with the office staff, we had a nice catered party for them, make sure that they know that we appreciate everything that they do. Our Ombudsman staff work hard, they work very diligent, they manage rolling caseloads, unlike someone who may have a static caseload where they take a case and they complete it to fruition, then they take a next one. Our Ombudsmen are constantly working cases, waiting on information to come in, waiting on documentation, picking up new cases as they go along. So they work rolling caseloads. Generally, between six and 15 is what we currently have, depending on the length and complexity. Obviously, the person who has six has a little bit longer cases. The 15s are more the ones where they're just checking information that may be within the Microsoft or the Micro Focus system and reporting out what happens. Not a whole lot of investigative work on that one, which generally lead to a higher caseload. But we wanted to make sure that we honored the Ombudsman within the office and the role that they play in promoting fairness, accountability, and advocacy. And it's not advocacy for any one side against the other, but it's advocacy for the process and advocacy for the truth at the end, because that's what we're all looking for. We also want to give a special shout out to Dr. Amanda Hernandez and her team. They came over, they did some video with us. They had to have a whole lot of patience with the staff, right? We're not actors, as you're gonna see here quite clearly, but we appreciated them coming over and helping us.
Each October during National Ombudsman Day, we recognize those who embody the spirit of the role. Individuals who build bridges, resolve conflicts, and make sure every voice is heard. Stick around as our team walks you through the heart of what we do, how we do it, and why.
My name is Brian Patrick, and I serve as Director of the Office of the Independent Ombudsman for the Texas Board of Criminal Justice. I report directly to the Chairman of the Board, ensuring our office operates independently from the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. That independence is key. It allows us to work objectively, listen impartially, and act with integrity.
The Office of the Independent Ombudsman serves two primary roles.
First, we provide reliable information and support to both the general public and elected officials.
Second, we investigate complaints and work toward meaningful resolution, ensuring concerns are addressed with fairness, transparency, and care.
The first step of most complaints is to ensure the issue has been brought to the attention of the unit administrators.
They're often in the best position to resolve concerns quickly and directly. We encourage that initial communication before further steps are taken.
When informal resolution isn't successful, the next step is for the inmate to submit the complaint through the inmate grievance process.
This formal channel ensures that concerns are documented and reviewed according to established procedures.
Once both steps of the grievance process are completed, Step 1 and Step 2, and concerns remain unresolved, individuals may bring their complaint directly to our office.
At that point, we review the issue and determine if the matter will be investigated.
The Ombudsman request form is available online and can be submitted directly through our website or sent by U.S. mail or email.
We're committed to making the process as straightforward and accessible as possible.
Please include the inmate's name and TDCJ identification number when submitting your complaint.
The more detailed information you provide, the more effectively we can determine if an Ombudsman investigation will occur.
Each investigation is tailored to the specific concerns raised. We will review internal information, which may be supplemented by requesting documentation, reviewing video surveillance or body camera footage, conducting televonic interviews, or performing unit visits.
Once the investigation is complete, the Ombudsman will issue a formal response to the individual who submitted the inquiry.
If the findings reveal the allegations are substantiated, we will work to remedy the matter and may include recommendations for TDCJ officials.
There are certain complaints our office is not authorized to handle. Due to privacy laws, medical-related concerns are referred to the Health Services Division.
Complaints involving allegations of criminal conduct are directed to the Office of the Inspector General.
To be able to be surrounded by a team that is so committed to help others and resolve conflict, it's truly phenomenal. I take so much pride in the work we do in this office, and it is so incredibly rewarding to be a part of something that supports continuous improvement in our criminal justice system.
As we reflect on the values celebrated during Ombudsman Day, we want to extend our deepest gratitude to the dedicated Ombudsman staff, whose compassion, professionalism, and commitment to fairness make a lasting impact every day.
To the men and women across our agency who show up with integrity, who serve with purpose, and who lead with heart, thank you. Your work matters. And to our board, thank you for your continued support of this office and the initiative it represents.
Your belief in this mission allows us to keep building trust, fostering accountability, and making a difference where it counts.
To learn more...
That was excellent. Are we intending... Are you intending to have that roll out across any particular platforms? Like, because I saw a lot of content in there that would be useful for, you know, our incarcerated population, and quite frankly, a lot of our folks who work in the agency who may not know exactly what the Ombudsman's Office does. So is there some thought that you might roll out something like that to a wider audience?
Yes, sir, that's a great question. We have had discussions with Dr. Hernandez and her staff about how to best utilize that video, maybe putting it on a tablet, maybe putting it on the website, the social media for TDCJ, because the complainants who contact us as well. You know, if we could save them a phone call or an email to let them know, hey, it's not something we do, go there, or they have to complete the grievance process, that makes it easier for them as well.
And I also like the way the video kind of puts a face on the process too, right? It's not some faceless process.
Except for that one ugly mug with the...
Well, I was just gonna say that I know you say you report to us, but I guess I really can't control your backdrop all the time. Because that first... The second backdrop was great, the one that said National Ombudsman's Day. But that first backdrop, and I think you probably know why I'm a... I have a slight objection to that.
I will say this, I would have selected it anyway, but I didn't select it.
Oh, alright.
When I came in, they had it set up, and I was like, you're a good man for picking that Buckeye background.
Alright, alright. So go, yeah, so, okay, well, so we'll give you a pass on that one. Any other thoughts or comments from the board on this very good presentation? If not, thank you so much again for being...
Yes, sir.
For giving us an update on what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Real quick, for the annual report for August 1st through September 30th of this year, we have some data which reflects the inquiries which warranted investigative action, referrals to other offices, or formal complaints within the office. During this period, the Office of the Independent Ombudsman responded to 927 complaints, year-to-date total, 4,160. Also, as a little bit of information, how these inquiries reach us, an inquiry that could come into the office, could be anything, whether it's in writing or phone call, 210 are U.S. mail, most of those are inmate correspondence, some still are public, phone calls, as well as our overwhelming majority that come into us, which is electronic communications through the email and the web form. Our complaint category is explained. Primarily, we have our emergency categories. Those could be our respite complaints about excessive heat, and most of those are life and danger complaints, where there's a safety or security threat to the person. Those are our Priority One categories, they get addressed without delay. Those have 391, 118 medical. Those are addressed without delay too, but of course, those are just forwarded to the Department of Health Services with TDCJ, just as an advisement to let them know the complaint was received. From classification, all the way down through legal and religious, which we haven't had any of the religious complaints yet this year. Those do come in from time to time when it talks about access to religious services.
Sure. Absolutely. Alright. Yes, sir?
Some of our notable inquiries, we have some bilingual staff in the office who help translation services. We have 67, which they've assisted us with, and 161 inquiries which came directly from the inmate population. If any division within the agency would like these direct reports, please let me know. Please let Ms. Gunnels know, we'll be happy to help.
Excellent. And just one other question, how are you coming on your office renovation? I know you were doing a little bit of work in the office there in Huntsville to get... Is that... We making progress on that?
We are, we are. There's some orders, or some materials that are on back order, so we've been given a time for that. We hope to have that done by the end of the year.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir.
Any other thoughts or questions? If not, thank you so much for being here today. Thanks for your work. Continuing with the updates from our board's direct reports, the next item on the agenda is a report from our Director of the Independent Office of Inmate Counsel. I'm so happy to say that. Judge Francis, you rattled off that acronym so easily. IOIC.
Yours is better than Mr. Sarito, I'm sorry. Your hopes of EIEIO did not...
But Ms. Wyvonne Long, we're so appreciative of you, and we appreciate you being here today to give us an update on the operations of the office.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Chairman Nichols, Board Members, Mr. Lumpkin. That has a little different ring. I just wanted to provide a little information, a little update about what we've been doing in our office. Recently, our Section Chief, our appellate chief, designed and conducted a CLE that we received accreditation from the Texas Bar, and so our attorneys were able to attend in-house and receive CLE credit for it. And it was a review of recent case law for civil cases, and he's currently working on another CLE that will review current, recent decisions, sorry, for criminal law. And so we really appreciate Mr. Nash handling that for us. Our division recently attended verbal judo training. Mr. Patrick was gracious enough to offer his services, and he actually did two-day training, so all of our people could attend. So if you were out of pocket in court or whatever, you were able to attend on the other day. And Mr. Sarito was kind enough to let us use his conference room, which was a very good fit, and we really appreciate both of those for helping us out. We recently lost two attorneys. Mr. Brewer, who is our Criminal Section Chief, announced his retirement. He's been with us 14 years, and he's going to go sailing. And Skylar Cutrell was a new young attorney who came to our office and actually got his trial tops in our office. And he's currently here in Austin at the Travis County PD's office. So they're gonna be missed, we wish them the best, and we are hiring new attorneys, so it's working out. Mr. Avila is working remotely from Lubbock, and Mr. Block will be working remotely from San Antonio. Mr. Avila is a brand-new attorney, and he will be doing criminal in the West Texas area. He is primally positioned to handle those cases. The Smith Unit, Bill Clements, Jones County with the Robertson Unit. And then Michael Block has, comes to us with 10 years' experience in a prosecutor's office, and he's gonna be doing some civil cases down south, and so we're really excited about both of those guys coming in. And just an update on cases, appellate currently has 23 active cases, civil has 66, criminal 385, legal services BIR 575. Now, those cases are cases that are reviewed only every two years, and so it sounds overwhelming, but it's not that bad. It roughly estimates to about 10 cases per month that we look over. And then Time currently has 220 open files. And just as an aside, I was told when I came in, we had an interview on Wednesday, and it looks like that young lady is going through the background check process. And Mr. Kim actually interviewed someone this morning, and they're both attorney positions, and so we're probably going to be asking that that individual go through a background check as well. So we're excited about new attorneys.
Very, very good news, and very much appreciate your update. Any other questions or comments? Ambassador.
I just noticed that Mr. Michael Block is from my hometown, the great city of San Antonio. I would welcome an opportunity to sit down with him in San Antonio.
Okay, I'll have to tell him that. I'm sure he would enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you so much for being with us here today and reporting, and congratulations that we finally crossed the goal line. I think we've taken all action we need to take. The legislature has taken all the action they need to take, we've taken all the action we need to take to get a very appropriate name for your office in place.
Absolutely.
So thank you for all of your persistence and your patience in helping us through that process.
We would just like to thank the board. We couldn't do what we do without you guys. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Long. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Prison Rape Elimination Act Ombudsman. Mr. James Booker from the PRIA Ombudsman Office will be presenting today. Mr. Booker, we see you approaching the podium. When you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Lumpkin, and Board Members. And again, I am James Booker from the PRIA Ombudsman Office. I'm here just to give a report from June 2025 through August 2025 on some stats from the office. First of all, this is our organizational chart. Of course, you can see our leader, Cassandra McGibbera. And then we have our Staff Services Officer to the left, which is Alexis Alford. And then we have our new data analysis person that we've just hired, which was previously an ombudsman. That's Mr. John. And then you got the best-looking one on the Cassandra there, which is myself. We currently have an opening for Manager 3, which we're gonna be interviewing for. And then to the right, we have, excuse me, let me put my lookers on here. To the right, we have our compliance managers that oversee the investigations of the CID units. We have Fred here, we have Rena, we have Cody, we have Ms. Martha, and then we have Danielle and Tyranda. Over to your left, we have our PRIA Ombudsman, which we'd like to call our Triage Group. This group actually take the inquiries that come in, whether they're coming phone, coming through phone calls, emails, and they determine whether these inquiries meet the PRIA standards of sexual abuse or sexual harassment. And that is Ms. Donna and Bree to your left. Some statistical data that I have here that I want to share with the group. Next slide.
We've got, we've got, we've got it in front of us. We have the slide on the statistics.
Okay. The PRIA Ombudsman actually took in... The, the PRIO Ombudsman actually took in six hundred and two inquiries, and that's broken up into two categories. One is the general public, which was three hundred and sixteen, and then the other is from the inmates themselves, which is two hundred and eighty-six. On the other side of the house, which is the Ombudsman and Compliance Managers, they actually oversee the investigations that are coming from the CID units. We assisted with nine PRIO audits, and those PRIO audits are broken down into CID, CSCD, and Transitional Treatment, which is typically called TTC. I am proud to say that of the six units, we did Sanchez, we assisted with the PRIO audits with Sanchez, Wayne Wright, Hilltop, O'Daniel, McConnell, and Johnston. And I'm proud to say that these units have all passed without any corrective actions. They passed their PRIO audits. The Compliance Managers assisted with five hundred and eighty-one investigations. This is making sure the investigations coming from the units are in compliance with PRIO, making sure the right people were interviewed and the right verbiage was used, and that all information is relevant to the issue. Management, we attended TCA in June, and then the, we also went to Wisconsin in July for the PRIO Coordinator's Conference.
Excellent. Excellent report, Mr. Booker. Any comments or questions?
Could we get a copy of the organizational chart? Maybe be sure Jill has a copy of that and she can send it.
Absolutely. Okay.
Alright, any other questions? If not, Mr. Booker, thank you so much for being and here and giving us an update on all the good work that's going on within that, within the group.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, and I think this may be a last but not least, is a report from the Office of the Independent Auditor, Mr. Chris Sarito, our Chief Audit Executive, will be presenting. Mr. Sarito, when you're ready, please proceed.
I would agree with you, certainly not least. I'm going to give you a little bit of your time back this afternoon. What I will tell you is I have no updates to the status report that is in your packet. All of the audit statuses that are recorded in your book are the current statuses of those audits. One last thing, you beat me to the Ohio State when it came to Mr. Patrick.
Yes, sir.
And then I was remiss earlier when I did not mention that I received my first case from the special prosecutor earlier this week, and we're beginning the process to set up some interviews. With that, I'll pause for any questions.
Fantastic. I know the, the board has had a chance to look over this report, the status report on the, on the independent audit projects. Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Sarito? If not, Mr. Sarito, again, we very much appreciate your presentation earlier and your update on the projects, and we are available at any time, as you know, for any questions that you all have as you go through this very, very important work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alright.
Do you know what month our next board meeting is in?
I'm already ready for you. Thank you.
With, with that, thinking ahead to the holidays, I would like to thank all of you for coming here today and remind you that the next meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice will be December 19th, 2025, in Huntsville. There being no further business, the 243rd meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is now adjourned. It is 12:40 PM. Thank y'all.